Jeff, that's actually happened before.
Okay, so we can start? Ready to go? Okay. All right. Six o'clock on Tuesday, February tenth, correct?
Yes.
We're starting our selectmen's meeting and we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Dr. McQueen is here and he can give him a couple of minutes. While you're here, you live next door and you don't have to stay through the entire meeting. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. I just wanted to express my gratitude to Betty for representing you all at our emergency meeting yesterday. We had quite a predicament. While we were measuring the weight of the snow from the first blizzard we had, last night around four o'clock, when the snow started to subside, we took another measurement and at the same time, we were starting to see reports for a coming storm for later this week. That's when we decided that we needed to do something now before we had any additional weight. The weight of the snow had approached the thirty pound per square foot limit and we thought, any additional storms are going to really cook us. So we quickly convened a representative from each of the boards and with Greg LeBrack and Greg Haddon, we had a very productive meeting. You know, what I'm used to is everybody really collaborating, putting their heads together and that's what happened last night. So ultimately, as you all know, we discontinued with school for the rest of the week and everybody now is putting together their plan to address, you know, the schools. So tomorrow, for instance, at the middle school, we'll have about thirty people on the roof and we'll make some quick work, I'm hoping, of that snow. And then we'll progress to the high school. Sweets are, from what I understand, has already undergone some shoveling. They'll progress over to Donahue. And Paige has a plan to use, from what I understand, is call firemen to help them out and I know you all are thinking about what you're going to do tonight. So I just wanted to express my gratitude. These are difficult things and I really do appreciate the advice I get from public officials. I work closely with the police department, with the fire department, and also with boards of selectmen as I can. And when we all work together, it just seems to smooth so much better. So just a note of thanks.
Thank you for coming in, we appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good meeting.
You have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye, bye, Doctor. Okay. That was nice of him to come by and explain because I'm sure people have got concerns about what to do with their children now that they're home for a few days. The kids are happy, I know that. The kids love us.
They won't be when they lose up their vacations or whatever they're going to be losing.
April vacation might be threatened.
I think there's numerous ways that they're looking at addressing that time, making up that time. Now, we have the warrants to approve, we have the payroll warrant. If somebody would read the payroll warrant and we'll address that.
All right, I'll get that started, Betty. Payroll warrant number fifteen dash thirty-three for a total of one hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
By Bill and I vote yes.
And I abstain.
Abstained by Betty.
All in favor, Bill and Joe, correct?
Aye. Okay. Next one is the deduct warrant, number fifteen dash thirty-one A for a total of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Bill warrant, number fifteen dash thirty-three, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Betty, do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second the Bill warrant.
I need a sustain from that.
Okay. Abstention by Bill, seconded by Betty and go ahead, Betty.
All in favor.
All in favor. I...
Joe and Betty.
Yep. All right, those are done.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was quick. Can we move ahead on these appointments?
Kathy, are you here for public comment or are you just here to observe?
I'm just going to observe it, but I do have a flyer for the chief's party.
Okay. Sure. We're during our public comment section still, so.
Thank you. So you maybe have seen it online.
Yep, looks nice.
To invite both of you.
Yeah.
Have a heart for you guys.
Thank you very much.
So we've got a really good response so far to the, to the party. Despite all the snow, the responses are rolling in and we're actually hearing from people who have left the department, retired and moved outside and they're coming back. So it's exciting, yeah. It's nice to hear from the old friends and...
So just for the record, so people at home understand, this is for a retirement party for Chief Clement?
For Chief John Clement and everybody is invited.
How long did he serve?
Over thirty years. You're testing me now, here we go. If I say something wrong, you're going to say wrong. Over thirty years and the town clerk also is selling tickets for us so you can buy them at town clerk's office or you can call me, Kathy Castranellis. I'm in the phone book and I'll make my husband go, "Bring them to you." No, I could do it too. I help.
What night is it, March?
Friday, March sixth.
March sixth, right.
The Fairways.
At the Fairways.
At the Fairways, yep. It's local, so. You can get tickets from Deputy Chief Mike Castranellis, Chief Rock Dower, retired, Captain Brian Grainy, Lieutenant Tracy Guilford, Private John Raipole and Kathy Castranellis, the lady that just spoke.
And the town clerk.
And the town clerk, Ann Brody.
Yes.
Very good. Are you leaving this with us or you two?
Yes, you can keep that one.
Okay, let's keep this.
Compliment.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So yes, if no one else is here, you may go ahead.
Yeah, we might, maybe we should do this. We have appointments. The appointment of Christopher Lattalian, is that right?
Yes.
And reserve dispatch lockup keeper, as a reserve lockup keeper, effective January twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen through July thirtieth, twenty fifteen. And the appointment of William J. Regan, Jr., as reserve dispatch lockup keeper, effective January twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen through June thirtieth, twenty fifteen. Do I need a vote on both of those gentlemen? Do I have a motion that we appoint both of these young men to the police department?
I'll make a motion to appoint these two gentlemen as lockup keepers for the police department per request from Robert J. Kamelowitz, the police chief.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Great.
Okay. Shall we do the lease for the Groveland Garden Club?
Sure, so if I may on that. So as you may or may not be aware, the Little Red Schoolhouse suffered a broken pipe a few weeks ago in the cold weather we had. And it turns out that while we were addressing that, I found a copy of the lease and it had been expired by several years. So this was really just a formality. We do lease the building out to the garden club for one dollar per year. They have already given me their check in advance of five dollars. Nothing in the lease has changed, the terms still remain the same. The garden club is responsible for utilities and repairs and improvements. And as the case with the pipe burst, they are responsible for the deductible. We do have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, but there was significant damage to the building and they are well aware of that and they know they will be paying that. So this is just to re-up the lease from January twenty-fifteen through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
There was a lot of damage, Denise, huh?
There was. So the pipe burst thankfully in the basement. So the hot water tank was ruined, the heater was ruined. There was some damage, the insulation has to be repaired. The pipe itself connects in the street and runs underneath the entire first floor of the building so they had trouble shutting off. The fire department couldn't shut it off, the water department couldn't shut it off. So they actually had to sever the pipe at the street and cap it there. So there's no water at all in the building because we were afraid of it bursting again. So we had, the insurance company came in, Servpro came in for several days and cleaned up. Thankfully, it's an unfinished cement basement, so... But they did have to dispose of pots and boxes and things that were in the basement. But it will all be covered with the exception of the twenty-five hundred dollars.
Very good. Another reason why we need a facilities person.
Yes, it was a very cold morning in that basement.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept it.
All right, I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Do I have an original here?
There was no further discussion today. I think Denise covered everything that had happened there.
Agreed.
And Denise, do you want us to sign? Is this the original that we signed?
Bill has the original that's coming down now.
And that was unanimous, right?
Yes.
Good. Well, the chief and Bruce aren't here, that's it.
See you later.
Guys next week.
So I would say if you have any further discussion on the roofing issue, you could certainly take it up now while we're waiting.
The roofing?
Because I added that.
Oh, this...
The Penticat, if there was anything else you wanted to discuss with Penticat?
Do it now?
We could. Put that time before they come in.
Thank you. First of all, sure, I have some thoughts. I wanted to thank Betty for putting this on short notice. I know that we have to abide by open meeting law and post forty-eight hours, but as you all heard, the superintendent convened an emergency meeting last night. I do have a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share and this is strictly my opinion. I think it's very positive that the schools are closed and certainly we want our children to be safe and the staff to be safe. But I also feel that the emergency nature of the event last night was unnecessary and it was kind of like, we kind of created our own crisis. For almost two weeks, we've been getting emails from Betty and from Denise almost daily, keeping us very well informed as to what the conditions are outside. We're getting reports, some on the hour, situational awareness reports, keeping us informed of weather conditions and emergency operations throughout the state and locally. And to me, it seemed really peculiar that the school administration just simply sits on their hands and they go out and measure snow on top of these flat roofs and then all of a sudden, we have an emergency. And now the schools are closed for two weeks, which unfortunately will put a hardship on some people. It's not just watching your kids, people are concerned about their jobs. And I think the whole thing could be avoidable. But I also do look at this opportunity in a very constructive way and I'd like to see this opportunity express itself in the district coming together. Now, in one area that we need to come together is to figure out who pays for this. And I understand that that was some concerns expressed at the meeting last night. But even then, I'm uncomfortable with this meeting last night because it puts our chair in an uncomfortable position of having to almost negotiate or address the issue of who pays for this problem and she's not equipped to do that because she hasn't consulted with the board, she hasn't had a chance to post a meeting. We don't know what's going on, we're getting angry emails and phone calls from people. So again, it's not fair to our chair or all three chairs of the town to be put in an emergency meeting when it could have been avoided. All you have to do is look at the weather report, there's snow coming, we have flat roofs. The meeting could have happened a week ago, two weeks ago. When we get to a certain point, we may have to address a problem if the, if the snow continues to come, not on an emergency basis. If we had this meeting a week ago, Betty could have calmly put together an extra meeting for the Board of Selectmen so that we can also participate in the process of understanding what to do and how to collaborate. Now, in terms of the cost, I'm not too concerned because I know that this district has always come together and they don't, we don't just look at the hard contracts. The regional agreement, especially the lease portion of the regional agreement is what's going to drive who pays for the cleanup. But I also know that it's never cut and dry. We probably will collaborate with the school and we're probably going to end up, and I'm just guessing because we've done this before, we end up sharing the cost somehow. We don't just look at the contract saying, "This is your problem, this is not my problem." And perhaps, I would recommend Denise, that maybe we reach out to the superintendent and suggest that on February twenty-sixth, the Regional Finance Committee will meet. I would love to have Betty there and like to see all the chairs there and possibly we can have a discussion calmly and talk about the regional agreement to start figuring out how we can share the burden of the cost. What I found out is that there could be fifty people up on those roofs tomorrow or thirty people and they all could get paid about fifty dollars an hour. So this is going to be expensive. And that can't be avoided. That is going to happen because of nature. What could have been avoided is the emergency nature of the meeting last night, the sudden shutdown of the schools. And being a little bit more proactive, I mean, people are angry with me, with us, the board. I had an email last night that said, "Why is the Board of Selectmen, you know, allowing the school to close and, you know, arguing over who's paying for this?" Of course, that person was misinformed, but I have no way of responding to that. Chair is put in a very uncomfortable position of having to run to an emergency meeting, not even be able to discuss it with us and then almost having to engage in a contract negotiation because ultimately, the regional agreement is a contract. So technically, we should, in my opinion, we should be discussing who pays for what and who's responsible for what inside of an executive session. But that's a matter for another day. My suggestion is, let's be proactive, let's learn from this. And my suggestion is, on February twenty-sixth, the Regional Finance Committee, and I'd love to see Betty there and all the other chairs, and we have a discussion about, hey, how can we share this burden? Because that's what it is. I don't want to get stuck with it by myself, I don't expect the school to get stuck with it either. I don't care what the contract says, if we can come to an agreement, that will supersede whatever we have written, if we come to an agreement. So thank you for that and thank you, Betty, for allowing me to make a statement.
You're welcome. I think Bill has a couple of...
My input is, and I'm not trying to, not trying to take apart what Joe said, but the way I've understood it from what I've checked into is, it started snowing on Saturday Friday and continued into Tuesday. At that point in time, the roofs took on too much snow. The weight had increased and that made it into the emergency situation that they got into. The payment, how it's going to be paid for or whatever, I agree with him to a certain point. Is it maintenance or is it something the school should have to pay for? I don't know, I haven't read the agreement, maybe Denise could help us with that, but I've only heard rumors it's going to cost roughly three thousand dollars maybe to do the roof at the Bagnell or our firemen can do it. You know, I think it is what it is, the winter's been the way that is and we get, I think we should, probably should try and figure this all out together and I know that schools or all the other schools are underway already. They've already figured out how they're going to pay for it, the middle and the, and the high school already and West Newbury's firemen are doing there, so I don't know what else to say. I'd rather see it move forward quickly than get our kids back into school than to try and beat it up, that's all.
Betty, what are your thoughts? I know you were there last night and...
Well, let me tell you how it played out. About four-thirty in the afternoon yesterday, I got a call from Greg LeBrack, business manager, and he said, "Betty, can you come to an emergency meeting at the superintendent's office?" And he said, "We have an issue with snow on the roof," or roofs. And I said, "Yeah." I said, "What time, Greg?" And he said, "Well, between six and seven, I'll get back to you." At five-thirty, quarter of six, I called Greg back because I hadn't heard back from him and he said, "Oh, I thought I told you it was going to be six." Needless to say, I said, "Well, I'll be there as soon as I can." And he said he had to go to Merrimack to pick up maybe Chairwoman Laura Mailman because she wasn't able to drive over. So I went down there, Laura was there, Glenn Kemper was there, the superintendent, Greg LeBrack, Greg Haddon, is it Haddon?
Haddon, yep.
And a couple of people from school committee, I believe, and I should, is it Chris Wild? Is that his name? One other gentleman. So the superintendent explained what was going on and that, you know, they had done some measurements and found that where the snow had drifted, it was very, very deep and he wanted to make plans to get the weight off the roof and he wanted our input. So that's, that's what happened. The kids to go there would be in some sort of jeopardy. They felt it was a good time, we could take care of it the next four days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. They're going to be on vacation the following week, so that's, that's how it played out. We didn't take a vote, we had just an informational meeting. There were some estimates passed out and documents that showed where the roof has gotten abundance of snow. So if you guys want to look at this.
Great, thank you.
So I didn't feel like I had done anything wrong. I went home, I got home about, I don't know, seven-thirty, quarter of eight, got on the phone with Denise to give her the information and as I was doing that, I guess, I don't know if one of you were calling Denise, but, you know, there was no intent to leave anybody out. I felt as chairman of the board, as that this is what I should do and so did the others. I was reprimanded a few weeks ago because I called Josh Zindoni during the night and he couldn't come here, so I've never had, you know, whoever's been the chair or whomever does certain things and I was going to share everything through Denise with both of you. So that's, that's where we are.
I appreciate that. The, there was no vote and it was informational, correct? That gives a tremendous amount of discretion for the chairs to attend these meetings and I understand that. Problem is, I'm getting communications from people that votes are being taken, discussions, you know, arguments are going on and it's like, I didn't even know the meeting was going on. It happened, it happened, I'm not concerned.
Yep.
I'm just trying to understand, that makes me feel good that there was no vote and there was information.
Absolutely. The three of us looked at each other and we said, "It's the kids, we're not going to leave them in a building that could possibly..." Especially during the day, I saw buildings collapsing all day long on television, so...
As I stated a minute ago, if we were to get fifteen more inches of snow on this coming Thursday and again, Sunday...
I heard that there's a storm coming on Thursday night, is that correct?
And they mentioned that too, more bad weather's coming in.
Right, so I mean, I think, I don't think the decision wasn't a bad decision, I think it's a safe decision. God forbid, the roofs fell in, we put the kids in and they fell in and someone got hurt. I mean, we'd be in a worse predicament, so I don't think we should say right or wrong. I think we should come up with what we need to do for the Bagnell school roof. Let's talk about what we're going to do, let's get that done, let's get the school back open and get the kids in there, that's how I feel.
Well, you know, it is an opportunity also to set a procedure. I mean, we do own flat roofs and we are going to have snowy winters and I hate to have an emergency, you know. Again, I think this was avoidable. You know, you can't avoid that it would happen, but we could, we could have avoided turning it into a crisis. We could have had this meeting a week or two ago. And so listen, we're expecting a lot of snow based on what's coming in, so when it gets to this point, we're going to have a problem. So we're, we're having this discussion now, we have a policy in place or we have a procedure in place. This administration has procedures for almost everything and I see no specific procedure, almost a reactionary condition with the flat roofs and no proactiveness at all and it's just mind-boggling.
So what would have to happen is, we'd have to engage this conversation with the school committee or the superintendent or whoever's the head of maintenance at that school system because we don't make the decision on flat roofs.
No, 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 of course not.
We don't do the measurements, we do none of that, that's them. So we need to now, if you want to get a policy or procedure, we need to have them in here and talk with them or we need to go there.
It's the school's responsibility, that's all.
But my biggest thing, my biggest thing, is it, is it our responsibility to do that roof?
No.
I mean, that's what I'm, all I'm saying is, I mean, if it is, let's get going on. If it isn't, let's get the right person in.
Doesn't it seem silly to you, Derek, we're expecting a lot of snow. We're getting good information from Betty and from Denise, almost on a daily basis. I mean, the accuracy was mind-boggling in retrospect, we're getting good information and they're up there on the roof measuring every few days and then all of a sudden, oh, we've reached the point, we have to shut everything down. Doesn't that seem weird to you? That's like, not very proactive to me.
Joe, the information that I think that we're getting wasn't pertaining to the schools, pertaining to the roads, am I correct?
No, but I'm talking about the schools, however, knowing how much snow is coming down and they go up there and measure it and they're not removing it and then all of a sudden, we have a crisis. So it puts Betty in a difficult position, puts us all in a difficult position. My biggest concern here is that the public's perception of our ability to handle crisis is probably not very high right now. And it's not Betty's fault, it's not my fault or anybody else's fault, but I do hold the school administration responsible for being, for not being proactive on this. This could have been avoided. This meeting, instead of an emergency last night, could have been done two weeks ago or maybe should be no meeting if there was a standing policy, this is how we address it. We have emergency directors, emergency management directors. In our, in our town, we have Jeff Gillen, correct? This is very easy to communicate. Based on what's happening in the next week or so, we're anticipating a problem potentially with the roof. We'd like to meet with you in advance in case that does happen. That's all I'm saying, a little bit of proactive. I don't think, Betty, you would run a household, you know, from one crisis to another and Bill, I know you wouldn't run a business going from one crisis to another.
Joe, and I'm, I'm in agreement a hundred percent with you, but when you have two blizzards back to back and the situation, this whole situation that has come before us, it's, it's been unprecedented. It's, the weather is very unprecedented and I understand what you're saying on, if we had this policy beforehand in place, it would have been good. Grant, I grant, I agree with you.
That's what we have to have.
We need it. But I'm saying, the way, what everything took place and how it's taken place lately, I think that when they went up and did the measurements, they came up with saying, "There's too much snow on the roofs." Granted, maybe they shouldn't have said, "We want a chair, a chair and a chair." Maybe they should have said, "All the boards," but I think that just made more confusion or whatever, but I don't know. I, listen, I don't think, I think we should maybe discuss this further. I definitely think it needs to be discussed further and we need to, in the, in the future, have a policy put in place. Yes, I agree with you, but I think what we really need to come out of this with is get the Bagnell school roof cleaned off and let's get it taken care of.
Well, Betty, if that's okay with you...
If that's what we need to do, it may not be us, it may not be our responsibility, I don't know.
Well, Betty, if that's okay with you, I made a suggestion, but through you, I'd like to make that suggestion again, on February twenty-sixth, the Regional Finance Committee, that could be an agenda item. And then I would hope...
And you're a member of that, is that right?
I'm a member and maybe we'll have to post it because I'm hoping you'll be there as well and the other two chairs from the other two towns, because you guys were there last night. This is a great opportunity to say, okay, all right, okay, the emergency's over. Hopefully, we won't have another emergency between now and then after a week or so. But that'll be, the kids will go back, God willing, they'll be back on February twenty-third. A couple of nights later, the Regional Finance Committee will meet. It would be a great place for Betty and the other two chairs and then the Regional Finance Committee to say, "Okay, by the way, shall, you know, we'd like to see the school set a policy, we can't tell you, but we would like to." And by the way, let's talk about the financial impact of this because there is one heck of a financial impact coming on this. And that, that again, is one thing I'm not too concerned about. I know that we'll collaborate our way through and we'll probably, I'm just guessing, I'm not setting policy, it's just my opinion, I'm just going to guess, we'll probably come together like we've done in the past with a lot of other issues, special ed costs and, and other extraneous costs. And what we've always done, we've always come together and figured out how to share it instead of sticking it to each other by strictly what a black and white contract says. So that is my least of my concerns, but on February twenty-sixth, we could start that conversation. Just a suggestion.
Denise, you had your hand up.
Yes, so just two things. So I do think you make a valid point, Joe, that if it is determined that it's the responsibility of Groveland to maintain the roof at Bagnell, then I think that's something we need to know going forward because we should be more proactive and we shouldn't have to wait for someone at Penticat to say, "The, the snow is this high." You know, we should be able to gauge it and clean it off at our own leisure if, if snow is piling up. I did reach out to the fire chief today to see if he could get a team together of our call department to go up there. He did put a call out, I haven't heard back from him if he's able to actually get enough people during the day. He did caution though with the fact that Penticat has said we cannot use a snow blower on the roof like we have in the past, that having guys up there actually shoveling the snow may add up and be cost just as much, if not more, than the three thousand dollar estimate. So that's something that we still have to determine.
And we have volunteers, do you think?
Well, the problem with the volunteers is they're not covered. If we, if we used our call department, they are covered by our insurance. So that is a concern.
Am I covered?
You're covered by the liability coverage of the town, but I don't know if they would cover you shoveling a roof.
They might throw me off the roof, some of these guys.
So depending on whether or not he can get a crew, we would have to...
You're going to make light of us.
We would have to then get a contractor up there.
But I actually had a discussion with someone, there are people in this town that actually would say, "If you would allow volunteers, we would go up there and help at no cost."
But it is the...
You know something, Joe, honestly?
No, no, I understand, I'm just expressing. No, no, I understand, I'm just expressing. I said, I would be there too Saturday, I'd come in all day and go up and shovel.
I hear you, I hear what you're saying, but you're probably talking on top of that school. You're probably talking five tractor-trailer truck loads of snow coming off that roof. And front end loaders down below taking the snow away and stacking it. It's a big, big job, it really is. It's going to take probably twenty-five guys up there, I would say for a day to two days. It's not, this twelve-foot-high snow drifts right now, I know, you know, I've been talking, I've...
No, I drove by.
And the other thing I was going to say is, the other thing I was going to say is...
Sixty inches of snow in seventeen days, that's what's unprecedented.
The other point I'm going to say is, if we, definitely what you just said a minute ago, is we should have had this policy in place and we should have known when we have to do this. But if it's going to take us a week to come up with a decision how to get this done, I don't think we're being proactive for the people in the town. I know the school's out, but I mean, I think we should get it done sooner than later. And I know, I had a conversation with Greg Hadden, which is head of maintenance or whatever. He called me and I relayed the message to Betty. He was trying to find out what we're doing here tonight, what we're going to do, are we going to make a decision? And I said to him, it's not me, I'll put it before the board, we'll talk about it. What he wanted to relay was he wants a foreman on the job, present. There was a lot of damage done to that roof last time through the fire department. He wants to have someone there on the ground running the show if they do it. And he said that he would, you know, that's all he asked. He wants to make sure no snow blowers are up there, no power tools, it's all done by hand. And I understand we got a $3,000 quote, it's only hearsay, I haven't seen anything. But I heard there was a $3,000 quote running around, in my opinion...
Just for Bagnell?
Right. My opinion is, being a small businessman, is if they're insured, they have liability insurance and they can do it, I say have them do it because they're going to get in there within a few days, they can get it done. I mean...
Regional agreement has lease agreements. So we actually have a lease agreement with the district. And the lease agreement actually drives who does what and who pays for what. And to me, at this moment, I haven't looked at the lease, the regional agreement, the last twenty-four hours, I haven't had time to. But at this moment, I can't tell you who's responsible for the cost.
So we need to table it so we can figure out...
Well, maybe that's why we need to discuss it on the twenty-sixth. And then ultimately, it won't really matter because I think we're going to end up sharing the cost one way or another anyways. I'm really guessing that's a possibility.
Well, you're going to have to, we have to do the work, so the work has to be done. And then we have to figure out how to cover the costs.
So that's why the twenty-sixth, maybe we can have a discussion.
So we've got the high school, the middle school.
No.
So Betty, is that okay if...
That's all underway.
The high school and middle school costs would be shared amongst the three communities.
Right, right, right.
I understand that, I was there.
Is that okay, Betty and Bill, if Denise sends a message to the superintendent that on the Regional Finance Committee meeting, we...
Put that on the agenda?
Put it on the agenda and invite the three chairs?
Has anyone had this conversation, is anyone in those buildings at all? Are they completely shut down, no one's in them?
I don't know.
Because...
I think the superintendent's in there.
What I'm saying, if there's people in the building right now and if janitors in there and they're saying the snow needs to come off, should we wait that long to find out? Is this something they want done, like immediately?
No, so we're not saying to wait till the twenty-sixth, we need to get the work done.
Right, right, okay.
So we know we need to get the work done in the next few days.
Right.
Before the next storm. And before it drops to a frigid condition, where they can't move anything.
Chief Lay, can you add?
The twenty-sixth...
We certainly can.
Bill, the twenty-sixth is just to talk about who pays for it and how. And that's a natural place in the calendar because that night happens to be the Regional Finance Committee, which is a financial, a regional financial entity, so...
I see Chief Lay out in the hallway out there, maybe we can see if he wants to weigh in on this.
It's right here, it's in the room.
Can that be...
The hallway?
Well, I was trying to make it sound like you weren't in the room.
Were you able to hear back from any of your department on whether or not...
Two so far, but the email went out this afternoon, so... And I, you know, one's a student, he didn't have class that day, so he's available. The other one works for an analyst company, he's available, he's not on shift that day, so that's my dilemma. I probably have some other people, but I'm not sure they're avid snow shovellers.
I'm talking that you're going to probably...
I don't know who is.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Right.
You know...
What I'm trying to say is, to do that roof, you'll probably need a minimum of fifteen people at one time.
I just said to Al, you need a dozen guys, you need...
One guy?
Thirty.
At least.
We had snow blowers up there at one point last year and I know you can't, we shouldn't have used it, we told them that.
Right.
But we used them, we raised it up, we didn't do any damage, which was a good thing, but it's talking thirty-plus people. You're going foot to foot and the distance between all those buildings.
See, the last time, we were the hands, we were the hands for the contractor, okay? So you hired a contractor and then we were his laborers.
Right. So if you had, if you hypothetically said you had twenty people up there and you're paying them roughly cheap, what are you roughly paying them, rough?
Their rate.
Their rate, roughly.
Fifteen, twenty-nine.
Eighteen's my average, probably, so...
Eighteen, you got twenty people up there, I don't have a calculator.
You burn through $3,000 in a couple of...
So we got a quote of $3,000.
Couple of minutes.
No, I'm just saying.
It's gone.
I'm just saying. And by the way, now my, now all of my personnel are committed to the roof of the school.
Right, right.
If you have something else, where am I?
And there's a fire.
So if we get, what I'm saying, it's a no-brainer, if we have a quote for that kind of money...
So Betty, do you know, do they have an actual quote or were they just estimates thrown around on the $3,000 for Bagnell?
That was the lowest, Bagnell School was...
So they had a quote from a company that would do it?
Right.
Yes, but all these people that do this kind of work, everybody's out straight now. So trying to find a business that does this is...
If you have someone that's available...
I think, I think speaking with Greg Hadden, I think they, that he's had conversations with these companies. And I think he's moving them from school to school to school. So as soon as we know...
Page School has firefighters.
Right, but...
Merrimack School, Cinnabaldi, Mr. Cinnabaldi's the DPW director, he's got a crew he hired for the Merrimack Schools. And now we're looking for somebody for Bagnell School.
So we can proceed with using a contractor versus the fire department? So that's the way, is that what the board would like to do? It doesn't sound like we will get enough guys on the fire department to do this, so...
It sounds like a good idea, is that all right?
Yeah.
So I think that's the smartest...
Do you need a vote or just consensus is good?
If you want to vote, you can certainly take a vote and make it official, but...
Should we put a dollar amount to it? Or we better not?
I don't think we can.
I don't think we can.
Not to exceed, maybe.
Not to exceed.
I don't know, that's what they said last night, I heard that, you know, verbiage thrown around, which...
I don't know what's realistic for it. I mean, you said $3,000 was a great price, so...
Greg did the assessment, maybe we can talk with Greg Hadden and ask, get his opinion? How's that sound?
Yeah, well, I can reach out to Greg, both Gregs tomorrow and let them know that we want to proceed by contractor. And then they can, if they have someone that they're using and rotating, they can just send them to Bagnell.
But also the thing too is if we have them handle it, they may feel better about the work being done and they have better control over not getting a roof ripped or anything. So it might be better off to let them put it, say, yeah, okay, we're good to go and let them handle it?
Sure.
Whatever, I'm all, I'm in favor, as long as we move forward with it, I don't care how we do it.
Denise, we have a motion that Denise talked with Greg and we go through Greg and get his advice, the facilities manager at Kentucky School District, and get it done as soon as possible, preferably before the next storm.
Just from a point of order, now, this is selectmen's times?
No, this is discussion for 7:50 that we moved up to early.
Oh, you did have this on here?
I did. So it's just we moved it up to fill the void of public comment.
So Bill is going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept to use an outside company to clean off the Bagnell roof, to do the snow shoveling. We're going to have Greg Hadden, Facilities Management Manager, try to work our company up for us to do it.
Okay, and we're not going to set a dollar figure because we really don't know.
I think it's kind of an unknown.
Yeah, okay, all right, so Bill made the motion.
If we don't put a dollar cap on it, then it couldn't go as high as they want it to go? I mean, should we put something...
We still have to ultimately...
We know we got a low quote of three, should we do a cap of six, just to be on the say-side, I don't know.
I would ask Greg's opinion on, where does he think we're going with the number?
Right, well, we'd obviously like to stick to the $3,000 quote.
Three is better than six.
If it's a legitimate number, that's who we'd like to hire, so...
Yeah, three is better than six, yeah.
Yeah, we like three, good luck.
All right, so we'll say $3,000 or whatever, don't even say a dollar.
Because we can...
Based on the quotes from Pentucket is what I would use.
Based on the quotes from Pentucket, we'll go with that.
We don't have to truck it out of there, there's going to be enough space down there to...
They may have to move it away from the building, I don't know how far...
The kids would probably be playing on it, so...
Yes, I don't know how far they can throw it or dump it, so...
They think we've made them out.
If they have to build into left-hand side, it's going to have to go up probably against the hill over there.
Based on suggested quotes by Greg Hadden?
Facilities manager.
So, okay, all right.
So the motion is made, and do we have a second?
I have a second in support of the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No further discussion, correct?
Oh, we've discussed it plenty.
We've discussed it. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous, thank you.
All right, now we can see the chief, a little late, sorry.
Chief Lay, how are you?
Wonderful, how are you?
This team, Lay?
Some of my team. Some of my team.
That's funny.
The A-team.
All right, so we're going to...
Okay, public's been invited to attend and we're a little behind time. Did you want, I know we've talked about this many times, I don't know what you would like to... You've probably listened to some of our meetings, read some numbers and ideas thrown out there.
I would like to determine where we are in the process. I obviously came here long ago to make sure we had a lot of time to plan around this purchase, whether it's one, two, or three trucks. The gentlemen behind me were basically the truck committee for the most part. There were some other players in and out, but they've done a lot of work behind the scenes and on the side, getting information for us to help us make the best possible decision. And I think I shared with you originally, a lot of that was around type of truck, size of truck, you know, length of truck, with a pump, without a pump, all of that. And it was hard to work through some of that. We arrived at a place where we think is most practical for the community. That's the work that we shared with the capital committee. Was, was it, we really come out on a smaller side of trucks, if you will? A number of reasons for that. Primarily in this town, it dealt with maneuverability, you know, being able to get into tight spots in town and those kinds of issues. Setting the number that you need, we, it's like, you know, you have a quote of three, but you're saying, put six to shovel the roof. We took the same approach with the truck because we didn't want to put ourselves in a place where we couldn't buy the right vehicle for the town. So the number that we used was the number that was on the capital plan from back in 2008. So that number, that 850 number was on the plan in '08 from the Board of Fire Engineers under the direction of Chief Clement at the time, with a projected replacement date of 2012 at a projected cost of 850. And I know I shared, I believe I shared with you, I certainly shared with the Capital Group that the cost of the trucks continues to escalate. They go up four percent a year, like it or not. It's really not the manufacturer, it's all the goods and services that they have to work with to build a truck. So they go up four percent, so every year you postpone it, you're looking at another $35,000 or $40,000 when you're looking to purchase a new truck. That's what put us in the position of the recommendations we made around the three trucks and saving the money. I know now we're back to, we're looking at one truck, and that's where capital came on. I think that was option two, if I'm correct.
Option three was one truck.
The email I just saw from them said, option two, and that they favored a one truck this year because if you put it off, you know, every year you put it off, it's another forty, forty-five grand.
Yes, Capital supported option two, which was the 850,000 ladder truck and garage doors, I think was what they supported for the fire department.
Right, okay.
Good, I'm glad the doors weren't there because they're way overdue. The whole truck thing, and we looked, in fact, we're looking at a truck tonight. We have a $950,000 truck sitting in the parking lot, it's got some miles on it, it's one year old. It's probably not a year old, I don't know if anybody knows for sure. It's probably not a year old, it's from a manufacturer we've done business with, they're known, they're trusted. They build trucks for New York City, they build them for Boston, they build them all over. That truck's 950, sitting over there tonight at 750. It's a demo, I can't go buy that because I don't have the money. In the fall, we looked at a truck built by Ferrari that we really liked, not unanimous because some would like a platform. Some won't, you know, some aren't real happy, but we learned to live with what we get. And that whole controversy was, do we want a platform or do we want a straight stick? So we're kind of at the straight stick point right now. But that truck in the fall, when we looked at it, was 579. We'd have bought it that night if we had the money, we would have. It was beautiful and it was, it's a used truck, but it's a new truck, that's a demo. That particular company manufactures a hundred trucks a year that they show and sell, okay? And I've said right from the beginning with the Capital Group, we're more than willing to buy a demo. And in fact, one of the articles that Bill supplied us all with was from, in here, I think it was Littleton, New Hampshire, you know, did what we did, worked on it for months and came in in a place where they said, we found a demo. It's all the benefits are new with the savings of buying used. This is about being current with safety standards. It's all about being a safe truck. You don't buy a ten, a fifteen, a twenty-year-old truck and think you can make it safe to the current national standard, you can't. Huge problems with corrosion, any truck that's seen fire service, that's different than being driven around and being shown, you know, like a parade. So you look for a truck that hasn't seen any fire service, that's what you want. Everybody's selling trucks, they're selling them because they're at the end of their life expectancy. It's not like you go out and buy a BMW or a Mercedes and you drive for three years and you flip it and go get a new one and they sell it as certified new. It's not what this is. People drive them into the ground, unload them, spend another million dollars and get a new one. Topsfield just bought a new one, well over a million, Rowley, 700 and change, Danvers, 1.147. That's, you know, that's, that's, Hamilton, you gave us that article, Hamilton bought a demo, bought a Pierce demo, $950,000. The truck was well in excess of a million bucks. So I would encourage the board to get us in that middle market, fund the money and let this committee work under that number. We have not demonstrated to anybody, and our track record is pretty good, that we don't take the money, run out and spend it. We're all about being practical, we're all about buying the right truck for the community. My primary role, before I worry about the residents of this town, is the safety of these people doing the work. That's where it's at, these people have homes, they have families, they got jobs. You can't take them out and put them on a used piece of apparatus, get them hurt, and then what do you got? What do they have? You're not burdened with salary in this fire department budget at all. The least you could do is buy them the right equipment to do the job. Remember, I came off my ten-year plan by $850,000 already. I've already saved you $80,000 a year against capital. Smaller, faster, more practical, all about that. And that's what this is, so I encourage you to accept the capital recommendation. I heard a number that was being swirled around 300. That's such a narrow market. I spent a whole year looking for a truck for 300 and then what have I got? I got somebody else's problem. They're getting rid of it for a reason. Unreliable, unsafe, I would not be in favor of that.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure, Bill.
Because you've said that I stated a bunch of stuff and I'm probably the biggest, as your men probably know, I'm probably the biggest advocate, and I'm not saying used, I'm saying demo or whatever. I mean, I'm not saying they're still here, but this, this truck here for $299,000 with 6,000 miles on it, would you call that unsafe?
Yes.
You'd call, with 6,000 miles, you'd call that truck unsafe?
It's not the mileage, it's the age of the truck, it's the corrosion.
2006.
Corrosion of the truck.
2006.
I don't know where that truck's been, is it certified?
Well, you're saying it has corrosion, I don't, we don't know.
I didn't know, I didn't say it had corrosion, I said, there's a corrosion issue on these trucks.
My job, I was elected by the town people, I'm here to, I'm here to watch the town dollar, I'm not saying I'm not making your men not safe.
Be careful of us, is what you're saying.
I never said that, so don't put the word in my mouth, I never said that. I've said repeatedly, I've said, I'll watch out for the men, we'll get the safe thing. You guys are here looking for a brand-new truck is what you're here for, that's what you guys are here for.
Incorrect.
If we could come out with a dollar amount tonight, can we come out with a dollar amount that you guys would say you...
I've said since the beginning of time, sat with the Capital, had a lot of really productive meetings with Capital, I've said since the beginning of time, sat with the Capital, had a lot of really productive meetings with Capital, where we talked about everything in detail. Instead of, you know, you know, this gets a little banter-like, and it doesn't need to be that.
It doesn't, we just need to come up with a dollar figure that we can live with, that's what we need to come up with.
Okay.
It's, that's my opinion, I can't speak for my other two quota parts.
It, it isn't three hundred, did I, I told you, in the fall, I'd have bought that at five seventy-nine, although I think it probably needed a generator or whatever.
I said, I have said in a, in a previous meeting, I think Joe might have said it, or someone had said it, you know, we might be able to get a truck for, I think they quoted, I think you had said, five seventy-something for a truck? I said, if you can find a truck for five seventy-something with a demo, I'm not going to say buy a truck for three hundred, it doesn't make sense. Buy the truck for five seventy, brand-new, go for it, it's, it doesn't make sense. But I've seen trucks for two hundred, two ninety-nine, perfectly good, I mean, I'm not putting your men in harm's way, by no mean, I'm not.
I don't.
That's okay, I mean.
Here's the thing, none of us are looking.
You're not going to get on a truck, but guess what, you have, you don't even know what you're going to get on yet, you know what I'm saying, and that's, you've stacked this room with people against me, but, no, no, you have.
That's unfair.
You have, and I'm just trying to say, let's just try and get a dollar amount, let's just get a dollar amount, that's all we need.
Here, here's the thing.
I, I just. Yeah, I, I just want everybody to be respectful, and we're not, we're not going to put anybody in harm's way. I'm not putting anybody in harm's way, I said, I think you've heard me say that. And I've talked with other people that will make a decision on this, and they don't want to be the person that makes a decision that you send your team out and somebody gets hurt. You know, Bill says he's an advocate, well, I've been an advocate for public safety for years, about keeping people safe, and I realize the job you do, and any given time, anything could happen. Bobby, you said there's some middle, we don't have to have the million-dollar truck, we don't have, we're not going to have the three hundred thousand dollar truck, I don't believe. Where, where, where are you comfortable, can you, can you say that to me?
It's really hard for me, and I've talked to Denise about this, I, it's really hard for me to give you a number, because here's, if I say, you know, six fifty, and then I can't deliver. You know, and I, and I say, oh, you know what, they don't want to spend seven twenty to get the right thing, I'll, I'll buy something for six fifty, I, I don't want to be forced into buying, here, the wrong thing. Here's how it's done in most communities, now I'll tell you, they establish the need for the truck, which we've done, and Commander said, they say, how much do you need? They appropriate the money, then they go build the truck to a money, you know, the amount appropriate, it's not the approach we've taken. We've not taken that approach at all. The eight fifty, quite honestly, there's a lot of room in that, and I've got people over there that said, we can spend at eight fifty, and I go, we're not going to do that. I'm not going to spend eight fifty if you tell me you'll approve eight fifty, but we don't know, because we haven't heard from the other side to say, if we settle on eight fifty, can we spend eight fifty, if that's, if that's what we have to, we don't even know that yet, I don't think we're at that point. I, you know what, I've talked to enough people about brand-new off-the-lot, in the sevens, Rowley bought us one for seven oh nine, no pump. The pump I told you is thirty or forty thousand dollars, so somewhere between seven and eight, but the right deal, Bill?
This isn't our first conversation about this.
Right.
And you guys, all of you guys, have been out looking at trucks.
Yep.
So you guys must have a good figure in your head, what you can find.
It's, it's hard to get anybody to, the numbers that you get quoted are on new trucks, nobody will quote us at demos.
I have a book full of used ones right here.
There's our demos.
I, I'm just saying, I understand.
I respect that, I get, I get a magazine every month, it's like Auto Trader, it's Fire Truck Trader, it's Baller Trucks.
Right, right, right.
Okay, there, there's a glut of old stuff on the market, there's a ton of that stuff.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And you know I'm as honest as hell.
Yep.
Has the town of Groveland ever bought a new truck, ladder truck? They've bought and used, it's gotten by, it's made our men safe, we haven't put our men in, in any kind of a safe, unsafe situation, and I wouldn't sit here and try and put anyone in an unsafe situation. You know what I'm saying, I wouldn't do it.
They're in it today, they've been in it for ten years, when was that last ladder standard? When was the last ladder, when was the last cab standard, that you can have an open cab? Oh, open cab, that was probably, I want to say, early nineties? We, we've been there since then, so we're already unsafe, okay?
Unsafe for the reason it has an open cab.
Correct.
And that, it doesn't meet the safety standards.
Correct.
They haven't said that truck's out of service, they had, no one took the truck out of service because it's unsafe.
The recommendation from the NFPA was that anything with open cabs, pre-ninety, should be taken off the road.
Right, right. So we, we have the conversation, I'm not sitting here saying we don't, we don't need the truck, I, I have no problem with that. I'm trying to come up with a dollar amount, a good dollar amount, and that's all I'm trying to come up with, I'm not going to, I, I don't, I can't speak for these other two suckers in here. But I just think, I think that we could do, I truly think that we could get something, you've been saying five seventy-something, if we can put a dollar cap on it at six hundred, I'm good. I don't think they want to go that route, Capital already said they're going to go eight fifty, finance hasn't said yet, I mean, at the end of the day, the tax people vote what they want.
I, the, right, and I, I agree with, with that, I think that the taxpayer should be the final say.
Right, they should.
But we deserve something too, from the standpoint of safety and reliability. This is not a, your average truck, it goes up seventy-five feet in the air, these guys put their trust in that truck. The truck we have now was out of service for about, in and out of service two years, three years, working bugs out of that truck when we first got it. We have short memories on the problems we had with that truck when it was originally purchased. There was tremendous amount of hydraulic problems with that truck, hoses, pistons, we spent a lot of money fixing those problems. So we need to think about value, we need to think about reliability and safety for the firefighters, we need to think about value for the town. Are we going to have another lemon, I just saw an article, you talk about articles, I saw an article in Connecticut, they have a seventeen-year-old truck. Has a hundred thousand dollar problem. So these used trucks can develop hundred thousand dollar problems very quickly, and we need to keep that in our sights. Are we buying someone else's problem? The trucks that are on there, I guarantee they have a mechanic in that fleet, and they know when that truck's going to fail, and they get rid of it before it's going to fail. So are we going to take someone, on someone else's problems, just because we want to save a few dollars? I'm all for, if we can get a demo like the chief said, it's great, it's certified as new, it goes back to the factory, they go from bumper to bumper, they fix everything. Certified as new, and as the chief said, we can save two hundred thousand dollars on that truck. It's a nine hundred thousand dollar truck, because it's a demo, and it has all the bells and whistles on it that they want to go show people, but they're selling it for seven hundred, seven fifty, something like that. So would I love to get the eight hundred thousand dollar truck and pay six hundred thousand dollars for it, absolutely. But when the demos come out, you got to take kind of what they, they have on them, and then they, they budget it down. But there is a substantial saving possibility for a demo truck, and I think for us, if we can capitalize on that opportunity, is where we should go. Because it's going to save the town money, and it's also giving the fire department what they need to do the job safely.
See, when we had that number before, it was eight fifty, and the last time we met, I think Bill and Joe thought maybe we could get a truck for three hundred thousand. And I kind of was in the middle with the five fifty. I think that's closer to what you were thinking about, perhaps.
And I, and I appreciate that, but if we set the number too low, then I can't buy a demo, I'm forced to go used. And a three-year-old or a five-year-old used truck is really only out there for one reason, you know that.
But I don't understand that, I don't get it.
Town of Brookline, Brookline, Mass. Has a truck for sale, who holds that? The two thousand and six, Toronto Skylift, hundred and fifteen-foot tower ladder, too big. They bought it, but it's too big.
Yeah, but that's not a reason to make your men here in this town unsafe.
It wouldn't fit in our town either, and a lot of the stuff that's out there is dual-axle, and that's not where we're at.
Not every single situation on a used truck, I should stop saying used, because you guys are going to throw rocks at me, but at any rate, not used, but a truck with six thousand miles in a two thousand and six. A two thousand and six is only four, five, well, five years old.
Why, why are they getting rid of it?
I don't know, I mean, there's, there's not, I'm not talking about one truck, this, this, as you know, there's more than one truck for sale. So, you know, maybe, I don't know, I don't know the situation, they, they sell, why did, why do people get rid of, why do they sell used, like trucks, dump trucks, loaders, whatever, there's reasons, I don't know. But I mean, it's not because every vehicle's junk or something's wrong with it, I mean, that's what you guys, you know, you know, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to end my conversation at this. I will go five fifty, you guys can do what you want, I'm not going to sit here and waste their time all night, I think at five fifty, I think these guys can get into a safe truck, and that's the end of that, and you guys can handle it from here.
I, I would like to say one thing about that, it needs to be certified, it needs to go back to the manufacturer to be certified, if we're going to buy a used truck. Someone needs to go through that truck and make sure that.
Every vehicle you buy is, it has to be a warranty put on it, and I, and I think you can build it.
Ninety-day warranty.
What's that?
It's a ninety-day.
Well, I, I was on the phone with some people, just to, I knew this was going to come up, most people told me a year guarantee, and we're going to, we want the service of that truck. When that truck bought by Groveland, we want the service back, they want a service and maintain it, is what the people I've talked to.
Bill, can I, can I just say one thing?
You know something, listen, I, I've said what I want to say, I'm done, I'm at five fifty, I'm done, I have two other people here, I'm only one person. The taxpayers, at the end of the day, are going to say what they want to say, I went from three to five fifty, I'm done with it, and, and that's just how I feel. I think I'm not putting anyone in jeopardy, and that's my opinion, that's, that's my opinion, that's where I'm going to vote.
I understand, so the only option.
We're not voting now.
I don't mean vote, but.
The only, the only option that will provide the townspeople, if, if we go in this direction, will be five fifty. Or are we going to let them circle one, five fifty, six fifty, seven fifty, eight fifty? We're not going to go that way, here's the problem, we've looked at twenty trucks over the last five months, we've looked at everything, we've had every manufacturer in the world out here. The best deal we've seen is five seventy-nine. So I can't buy a demo truck for five fifty, I don't think it exists.
Five seventy-nine, and what was that, describe that truck to me, the best deal.
That was a single-axle, seventy-five foot?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven foot Ferrari Quint, so it has a pump, which, which is another important feature for us, it's based on our manpower, based on our ten-year plan. You know, it's, it's the right truck, seven out of ten ladders manufactured today are Quints, we've been shopping a Quint since day one, it's the right thing to do for this town. Five fifty doesn't get me there, six fifty, I can live in there, you know, I, I think, because I think that five seventy-nine probably might exist again, a, a year from now. The trucks show up in June, after all the shows are done, that's when they hit the market.
That's a good time.
Kurt, you said something about, maybe I misheard you, an eight, eight hundred and fifty dollars, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck. Did you say there's a possibility you could get that for six, did you say that?
The truck that we have sitting over there right now, it's a KME, and it's a demo truck.
Uh huh.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys.
Nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck, because it has all the bells and whistles on it, because they want to go out and show. It's been driven around the northeast and down south, and all over the place, to show the different features that are available in the apparatus.
Yeah.
So right now, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a demo truck, I want to say, how many miles now, Brian?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand miles, but as we all know, you don't wear out diesel engines in, in motor trains, you wear out hydraulics. They take that truck, if we want to buy that truck, they take that truck, they bring it back down to Pennsylvania to their, their, where they manufacture. They go from bumper to bumper, they, and they certify that truck as new, they warranty it as that new, everything is, it's like us getting a new truck, but we're going to save two hundred thousand dollars. Now granted, the truck that the chief was talking about, that was seven hundred and, I mean, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Similar truck, less bells and whistles. That was the, that was the seven hundred thousand dollar truck that you can get for five seventy-nine, which is really where we want, that's the sweet spot for us. We can save a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a truck, because it's a demo, and it's certified as, as new, that's where we want to be, but we'd rather have the, the seven hundred thousand dollar truck than.
If we could get it at five seventy.
The nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Right.
So they're, they're available, and like the chief said, typically what's, what Hamilton did is their truck failed, and they instantly had a town meeting, and they appropriated the funds to buy that demo truck, because it was available. Within two weeks, I want to say, from my understanding, they were able to purchase that truck, they went to town meeting, the town said, yes, buy it, and they went and bought it. If we're going to shop, we need town approval before we can shop, like the chief said, in the fall, that was a wonderful truck, but we didn't have approval to purchase it. It would have saved a lot of money.
If we appropriate a certain level of funds, and then we want to make an adjustment upwards, we, we would do that with a special meeting?
Yes, so if you, if you set a dollar amount, and it's higher than that, you would have to go back to town meeting. On the opposite side, if you set a dollar amount and it comes in lower, at the next town meeting, you could just rescind that excess that you no longer need.
So if we appropriated, let's say, five hundred and fifty thousand, and these guys find something for five eighty, six hundred.
We can revisit.
Then we can, we can, we can convene a special town meeting, with what, a thirty-day notice, I think?
So there's two things, you can either find the thirty thousand dollars elsewhere.
Yeah, well, that's true.
If it's, if it's to be borrowed, it needs two-thirds of the majority of town meeting, and, and a purchase of eight hundred, five hundred, whatever, a thousand dollars, needs to be borrowed.
Right, but we can put together a, a special town meeting, a hundred, a hundred folks have to show up.
You can, I will just caution that, you know, I don't know how often demo trucks come available, so if it's something that, you know, there's a waiting game and other municipalities are interested in it, we may lose it if you're convening a special town meeting.
The, the truck today, that we're looking at tonight, four, four of the towns looked at it this afternoon, they're hot, people are, people have figured out the demo market. They're hot, I, I would, you know, I, I would encourage you to, to pick a higher number and, and, and stay involved in the process. I, I'm not, and you already know, I don't run out and spend money, this is all about, you know, doing the right thing. Because you're going to approve a number that we know I'm coming back, I, I don't know how I can do it for five fifty, if the best thing I saw last year was five seventy-nine, when all the prices didn't go down, I think you're a little higher than that, but I think we're, we're.
We're, we're higher than that, because you guys are steadfast on a demo, that's why we, that's why we need to go higher, you guys are steadfast on a demo. And I said it, you weren't here at my meeting, I'm going to say it again, if I was in the city of Peabody, or the city of Beverly, in this conversation, I would say, chief lay, buy it. The truck's going to go out four, five times a week, it's going to be heavily used. Town of Groveland, that truck is probably used maybe, I'm not going to quote a number, but it's not used every day, you know what I'm trying to say? So that's why I'm steadfast, though, how I feel, that we do not need to go that high. And I'm not putting your men in harm's way, by no mean, by saying that, it can definitely, we can definitely, I personally think, for five fifty or, or below, we're going to get a truck that these guys are going to be safe in, and, and we're going to save some money, and that's just how I feel. I mean, if we're arguing over seventy-five thousand dollars, and you need to get to five seventy-five, and you're going to get a demo truck, I'm all with you, I'm good, I'm happy with that. I don't think we should go to make a special town meeting, I don't think we should delay this thing.
Al.
We're, the truck we have now, even though we've had trouble with it, it's kind of the Cadillac of aerial devices, it's, it's a mid-mount pla- it's like a crane with a big platform on the end of it, surrounded by a steel cage. Now, we're going to, we're going to settle, and we're going to buy a ladder, that doesn't have a platform, that you have to climb up and bring everything you're going to use with you up the ladder now. At my age, with, with, with forty pounds of gear on, I'm not going to carry a thirty-five pound saw up that ladder and think I'm going to be able to cut a hole in the roof when I get there, or bust out a window and pull somebody out of it. The beauty of the platform is that the tools are in there, everything's there, you ride up, you do your job, it, it's less stressful, you're in a cage, you're surrounded by it. So you're going to set a price, and we're going to be forced into buying a straight-stick ladder that you have to climb from point A to point B, each time we use it. Now, if I was in a full-time department and climbed that ladder every day, that, that would, that would be okay, but you know what? I'm too old to be climbing that ladder, I want a platform, I'd like to see a million-two appropriated for a new truck, that's the safest way to go.
Thank you.
And that would be, basically, the million-two would replace the truck we have with a new truck from the same manufacturer. That's one point two to one point five million dollars for that truck, we've come off that.
And they don't sell, and they don't sell a, the truck that you want to, that you'd want to climb up, that would not be a demo, they don't sell anything other, other than a demo, what you're talking about right now? The truck that you'd want to climb.
There's probably platform demos out there, yes. There are few and far between, though, we, we looked. We looked at a couple, not, not as, I wasn't happy with them, but you know, that's just my opinion, but I'm the ladder guy. Now, I'll, I'll, can I just clarify that a little bit? Basically, the chief talked about how many trucks they make, and all the manufacturers make these trucks to drive around, a very small percentage of those are platform ladders, because they're more expensive, so they don't make, they make five ladder trucks to every platform, if they're going to do a demo. We had one up here, we had one, it was, to buy it new, was eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to order. And they, we asked them what their demo price was, about eight oh five, because they don't make a lot of them, and they're a hot commodity. That was the one that Al was talking about, where it's not what we have, but it is a platform ladder, that's eight twenty-five. Chief is talking about even going with a straight stick, which is a less expensive option, so we're bringing it down below that. As you can see, we have people that would want, from a safety standpoint, they want the platform. So we're still in the mix here, and we're trying to come up with a, with something that benefits the town, but also lets us do our job safely.
So we go back to, we go back to, we shouldn't, we should not, I should not be in the conversation picking a truck out, you guys should pick the truck out, and we should be in the conversation for a dollar amount, that's it.
That's what we were here for.
And that's what I'm trying to get to.
I just, the, the, again, going back to the straight stick that we're going to have to settle for, if you're, if you're on a fire company, and that's your truck, you, you climb that ladder every day. I've got thirty-eight guys in the fire department here, I never know which guy I'm going to want to send up that ladder, guys that aren't familiar with it, guys that don't train on it on a regular basis.
It becomes a training issue also, if we, if we go with a straight stick over a platform.
We're split. I mean, half of, the guys that are all certified want to go into the building or in the building already. So, now you're left with a crew, like Al just said. It's tough to see who you're gonna have. And that's just, that, perfect scenario is, is you have four guys that know what they're doing going in, and you have four guys sitting out there waiting for them. You never know what you're gonna get. But, the one thing we do have is we can rely on our equipment. And our equipment, we have to trust. We can't trust something, I can't trust something that's used. Now, I'm not going after you, Bill, nothing whatsoever. What we wanna do is, we wanna get what our strong chief wants. What we want, 'cause we've sat there for several months, working this out, looking at every truck.
And, and, and do you know something? We invited the public to come here tonight, and guess who's sitting here?
Yep.
You.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? So.
But that's, that's an every issue. I mean, I've been, I've been.
No, I mean Kathy, sorry.
I've got the flyer down.
I'm sorry.
For the party.
But that, but Bill, you gotta learn that that's an every issue.
No, I understand. I clearly understand. I clearly understand. I think, I, I don't think, as Al just said a minute ago, and you just said, I don't think we should be in the conversation of picking you a truck out. I don't. I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that. He knows his job, you know your job. I would feel comfortable getting the right dollar amount to get the, to get what you need. And I don't, I'm just steadfast, that I don't think that we need in this town a brand-new truck. We don't have enough use for it. If it was Beverly, Peabody, a, a city, I would be good with that. I think, and I, I can't find, I can't find the truck that you need. I don't, you know, I don't wanna get in there.
Well, I understand, Bill. What, what I'm gonna say to you is, it only takes one time. That's the same.
I agree.
Right?
Right.
It only takes one time for me to go up that ladder and that ladder not to work properly, and I have that person on the other end I can't get to.
Right.
Only takes one time. That's all I can say to you. So, when you, are you thinking about used?
You guys keep saying used, though. I mean, I found, I found a truck in here, like I just said, there's one in here for two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, it was six thousand miles. I know you all say there's something wrong with it. I don't wanna have that conversation. We're, we're getting off to what I'm trying to get to. I'm trying to get to a dollar amount, no one's helping me get there. That's all I'm trying to say. I said five fifty, chief, you said five seventy-one. Are we at six hundred? We're playing a gambling game? I don't know. I mean.
No, I don't, I don't.
You know, I, I, I think you gotta, you gotta. That's all I'm saying, and I, I feel like I'm being the one that's doing all the.
You say five fifty, I find a truck, and then we gotta come back, we gotta go through.
I don't think we should. I don't think we should leave here tonight doing that. I don't.
So then, so then.
Not fair to you guys.
Then, 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 you know, get to six twenty-five, get to six fifty, I don't know. And I can get under that somehow. That, that's hard work too, Bill. But, I, I don't know what the right number is. I mean, these guys are looking at me like, what are you, what are you doing?
I know, we, we've had quotes.
Seven fifty.
We've had quotes for, from eight seventy, I think, to seven fifty-five right now. We've got numbers coming. The seven fifty-five number depends on how you finance it. At least you know more about that than we do. But the thing is that manufacturers are telling us, if we, we finance it, we can come off that number even more. So, that seven fifty-five can probably come down to seven oh five. Depending on the financing, depending on the credits we get back from the manufacturer at the time of purchase. And no one's gonna commit to us. That, that was a verbal commitment. They, they said, yeah, but that's typically what they see, in the way we purchase it, and purchase lease, you know, lease purchasing or whatever. And there's ways to come down. So, I think if, if we're gonna be in realistic number, the eight fifty was the number we carried from two thousand and five. It was on the, it was on the capital improvements list since two thousand and five. And was supposed to be replaced in two thousand and twelve at eight fifty. We can come under that number. And I think that's pretty good from a, from a, ten years ago, they, they estimated that this is what the truck was gonna cost, and we're coming in below that. So, my feeling is, we should be doing, we have a firm quote at seven fifty-five right now. I think that's a good number.
Can they hold the truck for you until you're ready to purchase it?
It's brand-new.
Can they hold that truck? Can they hold that number until you're ready to buy it?
That, I don't know how long that good number's been.
Twelve months, I believe.
Twelve months?
That's what I believe, 'cause we asked that. 'Cause you wonder, like, you're giving me a number, is it like a car dealer, and you go back and you go, oh, no, that was President's Day.
I gotta talk to my manager.
This is the Fourth of July, I think, I, I think it's twelve months ago. But again, so that's, you know, that's the ceiling, from our perspective, because that was Ferrari.
Right.
And, and he's, he said, there's a, there's a financing opportunity, I think it was forty thousand off that number.
But if you take.
And then there's a, another opportunity, no, factory.
Factory incentives.
Factory incentive, which they do have, which is another thirty or forty.
If you take a truck, and you buy a truck for, let's just say, eight fifty.
Yeah.
In twenty years, when it's paid for, you know what it costs the town? A lot of money.
Well, I don't think we pay it over twenty. I think we pay it over ten.
Oh, the numbers are going over twenty.
And we get twenty out of it.
It has a useful life of twenty, so you can borrow it up to twenty years, and anywhere in between that.
Again, I mean.
That's.
It, it depends.
It's like buying a home, I guess.
Yeah.
You pay a little more than what you think it is.
It all depends too, on, on what, what value you see in the truck. I don't think you're realizing what the value of the truck is. The value of, if you looked at all the fire engines, let's say, all the fire trucks in the city of Boston, and how much that costs, and how many times they use it, 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 like, one of the firefighters, it takes one time. And that's where the va, the value, we're not trying to go out and spend the town's money just for the sake of having a new truck. We're trying to find the right truck for the town.
The right fit for us.
Right fit for us. So, if you tried to amortize public safety over the number of times you use that apparatus, or these firefighters, or anyone in public safety, you would say, what am I paying for? Nothing ever happens here, until it happens.
If you, if you were to sit up in my seat where I am right now, and I've been elected by the town people, I have a job to do, and that's what I'm here to do. I'm gonna keep these guys safe, I'm gonna watch their tax dollar, and I'm gonna try and do the right thing. That's all I'm trying to do. You know what I'm trying to say? What's that?
How are you gonna do that?
I'm gonna try and get to a number that's a good number, and, and, and that's what we're gonna try and do. I mean, I hope these.
What's a good nu, what's a good number?
It doesn't sound like we've come up with one yet.
Value.
What's that?
It's value.
Well.
It's just like, if you're gonna spend a hundred dollars and you're not gonna get any value out of it, you spend a hundred and ten dollars and you get a real lot of value.
I ask you a question, and I'm not being wise when I say this. The truck that's sitting over there, do you get any value out of that one?
Which one?
Did you? The ladder truck we have right now? You must've got value out of that. It was good when they bought it, they used it when they bought it, they've had it for ten years, so there must've been value. You know what I'm trying to say? I, I mean, it just.
I, I don't think it was good value, 'cause we put a lot of money into that truck. The first two years.
A lot of downtime.
Had a lot of downtime, and we put a lot of money into that truck. So, we, we, we're, we're, historically, if we don't remember history, we're doomed to repeat it, someone said. And that's where the situation we're in. We had a lot of problems with that truck. And it was a lot of patience and a lot of money invested in that truck. And I'm not saying that it was a bad truck for the town, but I'm just saying, think about it. It was down for a long time, it took a lot of money to fix it.
Now, that truck had a lot of problems. Did that, did that particular truck, style, model, whatever, was it found to be that way with other communities? Did you learn that those?
That's a good truck. It's, it's, the design of that truck's rock solid, they still make that truck today. It was heavily used.
It's the Cadillac of trucks.
And that, that.
Heavily, heavily used.
That truck that you have over there, that body was designed to come off that truck and to go onto a new chassis.
Yeah, we looked at that. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to re-chassis that truck.
For the, for the cab?
Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you've talked to the fleet master about that.
Actually, one point one million.
One, one point one.
Just, just to, just to, uh.
Take that lift off.
Put it on a new truck. 'Cause they pull that whole boom apart, they go through it.
No, they have to recertify it and everything.
That, that's why we came off that. Sorry, Al. I like the one point two figure, to be honest with you.
But that's, we did look at that. We've looked at a lot, a lot of options. We're, we're, we're taxpayers too. Every single one of the person in this room is a, is a citizen of this town and a taxpayer. We understand fiscal responsibility. We understand that. But, value is where we're trying to drive this. And spending a little bit more money will save you down the road. And we're not saying double our budget. We're not saying that. We're saying a little bit more. And give the chief the flexibility to make a good purchase for the town. Have oversight. Oversight is great.
How, how do you, um, how do you have oversight unless, I mean, I know the bid will go to Denise and should work on the bid with the chief anyway, but I mean, do we have to come up with a dollar amount? Could we do it without a dollar amount? But how do you go to the taxpayer, the taxpayers without a dollar amount?
Taxpayers have to have a dollar.
They have to have a dollar.
Well, I think if you're gonna take that route, I would support the eight fifty then, the capital supporting not to exceed eight fifty. And then, with the goal that they would stay under that, and some, and then anything extra would be rescinded. Instead of saying nothing, you know, no dollar amount, at all.
As Denise has said too, you go, you, you'll have to go back to a special meeting if you lowball them. And the problem with that is, is, I've been to special meetings. We're sitting there for two hours trying to get.
Calling everybody up.
Fifty more people to come in.
I, I, I.
And I know you agree with me, it's just, I would, I would go with the, the amount that they're asking for and charge them, make, make, tell them. I wanna save as much money as you possibly can, 'cause that's what we're about doing. We're trying to save money. I have, I have to pay my bills, and, and that's what we're trying to do. But we need that number, like you said. If we go with that high number, and then we, like I said, high, hear it? Then we go and we save it. We're gonna, we're gonna come back with a good truck. I guarantee you, it's gonna be lower than what you expect. It might not be what you really want for your numbers, but, I mean, it's, we're, we're talking a few extra bucks on my, for me, to really feel comfortable in a truck. I, and based off everything I've seen, the number-wise, what we, what we've been looking at versus what's been out there, and I, I sit with the handle of the money guys, I went over there to train. I mean, it's, they're getting rid of trucks because of certain reasons, and they're not gonna tell you on a piece of paper, 'cause they need to get rid of that truck.
Can, can I ask Denise a question?
Sure.
As long as I'm here. Denise, when they go out to bid on this, do they have to say new use? Or what do they have to say? You know what I'm saying? Like, everybody, to be honest with you guys, I don't even understand the truck talk, okay? So, I don't, when you go out to bid, I don't know how you, you would do it with something as complicated as what they're talking about, unless they pick out the specific.
Application.
We would have to, we would have to put specs together, and that's what we would go to the market with, the specs that, that the department decides on. And I do just wanna make a clarification. I know we talked about this in the past, but any amount that's authorized for this, we're not talking about a debt exclusion. So, it's within the budget, it's within Prop two and a half, it's not going to impact the taxpayers over and above what they're already paying. What that means is, we may have to make sacrifices within our budget, whether, when it comes to other departments or other capital items. That's a sacrifice that we would make to cover this purchase if the town determines that this is a priority. So, it's not gonna cost the taxpayers, yes, in the long run, the interest will add up, but again, it's not gonna cost the taxpayers more if we buy this or not, 'cause we have to live within the constraints of our budget.
Right. And if you take.
We do.
If you, we had a person in one of these meetings, and the person said, I work here at town hall and I got a two percent raise. Do you think it's fair that I got a two percent raise, and you're not watching us for us, watching out for us people in town hall, but yet, you can go buy million-dollar trucks at that time? So, you gotta look at both ways, you know what I mean?
I know, but it's not a million-dollar truck. We're, we're trying to be.
Well, even an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck, or whatever it is, that.
Well, we're, we're gonna be physically responsive. That's our charge. And either you trust us to do that, or you don't trust us to do it.
Because as Bob would work with Denise, you'd put the specs together. Denise would report back to us how it's progressing, correct?
Correct. And we can reject any bid. It's not like we have to take it if we go out to bid and they come in high. You know, we can certainly go out to bid, and Steve can attest to that. We can go out to bid if we don't like the prices.
I mean, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, went from eighty to a hundred and twenty.
Yes. So, we can go out to bid as many times as it takes, if that's what, if that's what the board wants. You know, we can, we can go out until we find the truck at the right cost.
Well, and, 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 you know, the chief did write a grant for the truck. They made a federal grant in the, in the fall to fund this, this truck.
But didn't you say that he, he, he didn't look good?
I, I, it's very hard. Time with the, with Chief Cludier from Charleston, which is where they got the ladder grant. And had a long discussion with him last week, and, and I see why they got it.
Well, they're different than we are, correct?
They're way different than we are.
Right, we're not the same demographics.
All kinds of hazardous stuff, they got two, you know, service centers on the turnpike.
Yeah.
They've got a rail yard, a rail yard with hazardous waste in it, they had some restaurant halls with thousands of old people.
They have universities in town.
Six hundred and sixty thousand square feet. So, I mean, they've just, we can't claim that, you know, we just couldn't.
Did you say there's, I'm sorry, Joe, I know you're gonna say something.
It's okay, no.
Did you say there's?
I'm enjoying the conversation.
There's a, a truck over there now, for nine fifty?
He's looking for us. Seven fifty, wants us over there.
Does he? Seven fifty. It's a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck. It's, it's being sold for seven fifty. It's the first person that comes up with the seven fifty.
You want check?
If we had cash, you'd probably get.
Would they hold it for twelve months?
Seven hundred.
Would they hold it?
Cash, you take seven.
Am I wrong?
Would they hold it for twelve months?
No. You know what it is, Bill? They're, they're parading it around.
Somebody's gonna grab that.
It was on the, I think, where was it today?
Eamesberry, Salisbury, Newbury Ford.
How do you, how do you, how do you make a commitment to, let's say that we, you wanted to buy it, and we have, the money's not appropriate till July first, how do you make a commitment to say, we, we get it?
Well, I, I, I think we.
Put a deposit or?
Well, if I, so you can't make any commitments until town meeting. So, the window would be town meeting in April.
Yeah, I understand that.
And then you could, then you could actively start looking, and then payment would be July one.
July one, okay.
Because, and, and the demo market is May-June.
So, that's a good time.
It's May-June. The trucks, after winter, they start to come north. They're all, this truck had caught up here, but they're all down south right now, uh, because they, they don't, they don't parade them around in the cold weather. So, the trucks will be up in late spring, and they look to unload them by the end of June. That's, this is what we've learned. We, we've been researching the demo market for quite a while.
The special town meeting could appropriate one in this year.
It could, yep.
Could, yeah. No, that's what I was.
Kathy, did, did you have your hand up? Did you, or was that the question?
Can you, can you explain that?
Well, we have this, we've done this before for something, don't ask me what, but, um, the special town meeting that occurs before the annual town meeting is usually just cleaning up stuff.
Right, bookkeeping stuff.
Well, we've also, because we had to do something, and I can't remember what, we've appropriated funds. Am I, okay with?
Yeah, so you certainly can. The only, the only hardship would be, um, is borrowing the funds before June thirtieth. It, it does take, there is a process to borrow, so to get town meeting, you know, the end of April, and to get the money available by June thirtieth, would be a tight deadline. So, it's not like we can have it the next day, um, but we would have to go through that process.
But it's doable.
It is doable.
But you could sign a purchase and sale after town.
Correct. You can sign a purchase and sale. And, and with most of these trucks, like you said, Kurt, it's going to, you'd have to go back to the factory, it would have to be certified. I, I can't imagine they're gonna expect payment before they certify the vehicle. So, that would take some time. So, if you found a vehicle in May first, I don't think we would be in receipt of it until after July anyways, because I do think there's a process with.
And that, the truck that's out there tonight is one of the ones that you guys want, the platform and everything?
No, not a platform, that's a straight stick.
It's the truck that you want, or not the truck that you want?
It doesn't have else, I think some wants some.
We're not gonna get what we want. What do you say? Is that one point two million? That would've been the truck you wanted, because it has, it's a whole different market.
Right.
Well.
This means we're gonna have to change a little, do things.
If, if we appropriated three hundred thousand dollars, you would eventually find the truck, but it might take you a year or two. I get that. And if we appropriated three million dollars, it would take you twenty-four hours to find the truck, because you'd have the whole market available to you. So, um, I would be inclined to, um, think that somewhere around the six fifty range would make sense as a starting point. And then with the mechanism of a special town meeting, if required, to bump you up a little bit more if needed. But I also would wish for you to be really focused on getting a demo, you know, single axle, as you, as I noted here, quint, with a pump, and a ladder, that's seventy-five to a hundred. What's the most you can get? Seventy, uh, a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten?
On a single axle, or a single axle pump?
Seventy-nine on a single axle. If we could, we could focus, I mean, just really make a commitment to get a demo. I think it's possible for us to appropriate seven fifty. You know, six fifty and then special meeting, the extra hundred.
So, why, why wouldn't we go through special meeting? Why make, why delay it? You know, you know what I'm saying? Why? You're putting them, you're putting them through.
Because I think the, well, the, well, I'll, I'll answer the question. The chief said, the chief said, "I can work with six fifty." He thinks he can also work with six fifty.
So, let's give him six fifty.
Right.
Or arrange six fifty to seven fifty.
I, I, I'll go back and, and tell you, we have been looking since the beginning of this at demos. We're specking new, we're looking at demos. And we're learning all about what's out there. We've learned a lot over the last four or five months, a whole lot. Okay, probably too much. I know more than I ever wanted to know, but I suppose in my role, I, I gotta know. So, I think, I think we're in a good spot. You want to shovel hydrants?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the neighborhoods.
Mine's already done.
Pinewood, Blueberry, Carlita, those areas.
Washington Street.
My sheet, my sheet's done.
Forget that.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, it's.
So, finish what you're saying.
Hey, I, I think we're headed in the right direction. I, I would, I would encourage you to land on, on the seven fifty number. That gets us a lot of running room. I want you to, I want you to pick a number that's high enough that I can come back here and be proud of what I did. Okay? Not come in here and say, "It's not enough. I can't get anybody to play with me. I need more." You're making that really difficult to make decisions if the number's too low.
And, and with that seven fifty, it wouldn't be, uh, just a demo. Could be something other than a demo?
You could possibly get new at that, but, see, the thing is, Joe, if I, if I take a, a, a skinned down, you know, seven thirty versus a eight fifty truck that I can get for seven hundred because of demo, I want that.
Right.
I want that. There's the ultimate value. This truck tonight, I'll still hear, is the ultimate value for us. It's, it's, it's Cadillac at seven fifty. Now, we would never wear that. We got thirty years on that thing. It's a severe service chassis. It's the, it's the, it's the nastiest truck they make, this manufacturer, and they make good trucks. So, it's not where I'm at. So, you understand, everything is, you know, new is here, and then you come down a hundred, a hundred, a hundred fifty, two hundred. It's where we've been shopping. We recognize that as the sweet spot for us. I told these guys six months ago, this night would arrive, where we went in to say, "We want with the Board of Fire friends, fire engineers wanted," which was eight fifty, and they're gonna say, "What are you, crazy?" I predicted that one right. I don't think the town of Groveland needs to spend eight fifty. I don't, because there's a better way to do it. Most communities, Topsfield, you get three trucks in one night. And his, and his ladder was one point two.
It's a whole different.
And no different than we are.
But it's a whole different, it's, it's used too. They have, I think they have more use than we do.
Not by much. They're not much bigger than we are. Their department's like ours, but, because I talked to the other chiefs about it.
You know something? You've done your legwork, your men have done their legwork. You should walk out of here with a number tonight, and I'm a hundred percent with everyone here. You know, we, we started off at three hundred, we went to five, I went to five fifty, you're, you're steadfast at eight fifty, now to seven hundred. I mean, whatever, I mean, six fifty, I thought.
Put seven fifty on a table and buy the town of Groveland a nice truck. I, I, you know, and we'll do our best to come under that.
I, 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 I'm, I tend to agree with you.
Yeah, we could take that on the revisment, I mean, for sure.
Right, we're not.
I don't think we should take another revisment. I think that we need to make a decision. We're a board, and I think that we.
You mean, you wanna vote on it tonight?
I think we shouldn't. I think we should. I think we should stop playing with this. I think it's been going on long enough. I think the capital already have their number. I mean, the finance are gonna do what they wanna do, and the taxpayers, at the end of the day, we're not the last A here. We're not. We're not the last A. I really think, listen, we can't keep, we have to, as a board, have to make some decisions once in a while, and I think tonight's one, and I'm just being that way. But give them a number.
I think we make a lot of decisions. I really do. I don't sell the board shot.
Well, I mean, you know what I'm saying. That's just my opinion. You guys can do what you want. That's my opinion.
Well, um, well, we went from three hundred to, um, seven fifty. Not bad, huh?
Well, all those numbers sound good compared to what Al Credit thought was tomorrow.
I know it. I think.
I don't even like the seven fifty truck. Let's be honest with you.
I know that.
Okay, I'll, I'll become an engine guy.
But, uh, but I, I wanted to ask you a serious question. The seven fifty purchase, if the chief brings that in the door, July first, does it have, what's missing in terms of safety features?
Platform.
The platform is still missing?
Let me, let me, let me give you a little education on a platform. The nice thing about a platform is you have a working area. So, we have right now, we like it, it works very good for us.
Very safe.
Instead of being one person in front and your partner behind you, working at elevation, now you have two people working side by side. You have two pairs of hands to do the jobs. So, it's safer from the standpoint, you're not laying your body across a ladder, because that's what you're gonna do when you have a straight stick ladder. You're standing up, and you have your partner directly next to you. That's, that's, that's the advantage of having a platform.
So, to get a platform, I have, we have to spend the minimum of blank.
Eight hundred twenty-five thousand.
But why do we have to spend eight twenty-five if they don't have them, demos and a platform?
They do, eight oh five.
That much, just for a platform?
Yeah. That's, we brought, there's only one manufacturer on the market today that makes a single axle.
When you're saying, when you're.
That said, that, let me finish. That makes a single axle platform. Okay, one manufacturer, that's it. Everyone else, you're into a big double axle truck. When you buy the double axle truck, you might as well buy the bigger ladder, because you're already paying for, we looked at, to show you how in-depth we've gotten on this, we looked at an eighty-one foot KME, which is the same manufacturer that's over there now, mid-mount platform, and their ninety-five foot mid-mount platform. Same chassis, you know how much the cost difference was? Eighteen hundred dollars, because you're, all your money's in the chassis. Okay? So, there's one manufacturer out there that makes a single axle tower ladder, mid-mount tower ladder.
And what I started saying is, the platform is the bucket, I call it.
Yes.
So, you're, you're in the bucket, which, right, right, right. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I'll be perfectly honest with you, this book, there's not one in here. There isn't. There was one I saw for four ninety-nine. It had, but it was sold. I called, and it was sold right away. So, I mean, I understand what he's saying clearly, and that's a good point that you made, because I, listen, when I buy equipment for my business, I make sure it's safe, I make sure it makes sense. And in the town of Groveland, I wouldn't buy it. I, I don't think a stick, I don't think a stick, I think a stick is outdated. I, I, I do, I agree. I think it's, you know.
So, if we're gonna spend less than eight twenty-five, we're not gonna get a platform. Now, will we have the personnel and the training to be able to overcome that deficit?
We will train. We, we, there's no doubt in my mind, our, our firefighters will be trained adequately on the.
You know, because I can joke about Al's number, but I can't joke about what he's talking about.
No, absolutely not.
But you seriously cannot find, from now until town meeting, you cannot find for seven fifty, a platform?
We'll look.
I can't believe that. I can't.
We'll look. The, the other thing.
Narrow market, Bill. Really narrow.
But you have, really, you have until almost June of next year to do this.
Would you say May and June is the time?
But I think the problem is, if they find a truck now, it'll probably sell before town meeting.
Yeah.
If they can't.
Right, right, right.
And the thing is, if you're gonna go with, the, the other thing is, if you go with a single axle truck, there's only one person that makes it. At Sutton, and they're out of Ohio. They all, everyone else has gone big. They're the only ones that have stayed small.
Right.
So, there's only one manufacturer out there. We had them here. They brought a demo truck up to us, and we looked at it, and we liked it.
I can say, um, I don't know a lot about firefighting, but I can say that Chief Lay knows that I was at the fire over here on Main Street, and Georgetown showed up with their truck. It was a dual axle truck. It was a big truck, and I said to myself, "There's no way that thing's going up." There's no way. There's no room for it to go up. So, I, I hear. Right, I, I, but I hear what you're saying. I mean, I don't think the town of Groveland needs a dual axle truck, and I don't think they need a hundred and ten feet. I think they need what they need to make it work. I agree.
A single axle truck is what they call a seventy plus. It's a seventy-foot tower ladder. Basically, the same, same length we have now.
The beauty of our truck, Joe, since you just touched on it, we get in under those power lines and we set up underneath it.
Right. No, I, I, listen, I stood there and I figured it out real quick. I did. And I, I, you know, if you guys came in here looking for a dual axle truck, I wouldn't tell you no, but I'm like, I saw that, and I'm like, there's no way this truck's gonna go up, and it didn't, but.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, and we can certainly discuss. I'd like to make a motion that we consider appropriating, um, for the purchase of a fire truck, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Second that motion. Any further discussion?
Uh, no, I've had pretty much discussion on it, and, uh.
Yeah, and what I'd like.
We're gonna take the town to be safe, and after, you know, my, my thing would be, we have, we, we're gonna have say in it. The town people are gonna have say in it. So, if that's what, that's what these guys need, and that's what they, it's gonna make it, make it right.
Now, I have a question. I, I know in business, if you come in under budget, especially in a large capital.
You give me an incentive.
What can we get for incentive? Is there anything out there that we can, you know, incentivize to go as low as possible? I, I, I don't know. I mean, I know that in business you can do that.
It's how we end up ultimately financing it.
Good.
I was surprised. That's one thing I learned in this process. I was very surprised at what the list price was and what the potential for savings in, the way you finance it.
And can you give me some idea, give us some ideas?
Like, we had that seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar truck, and I don't know if it was a lease purchase, or if it was through one of the municipal purchasing programs. But they were, it, it came down like, I wanna say ten percent, uh, total, maybe five percent, probably five percent.
All right.
Um, just the way it was purchased. And that, like I said, that was verbal to us from the manufacturer, saying, "They only commit to this number, but historically, if the financing and the factory incentives come back, we're talking thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly."
So, and in terms of priority, as, I mean, this, this is part of my motion, I guess, in terms of priority, I'd like to state that you should try to buy something with a platform, and then the next priority is a demo of some sort. Just, I'll keep it simple. We don't wanna fine tune it any further than that. It's gotta be a quint with a pump and seventy-nine foot ladder. But, um, but you guys are promising us that if we don't have a platform, you guys will be able to overcome that deficit with training.
With training.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, you're on camera. Because Al brings up a good point, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna have nightmares.
Al, Al has. Al has been on that point since day one, and I respect him for it, and I, and I absolutely get it, and I, I take Al's concern, and I talk to other chiefs, because that's the only friends I have, is other chiefs.
We're, we're looking.
And I, and I see them a lot, and I, and I said, you know, what do you, the majority are straight sticks. And the other chiefs have said to me, "It's a training issue. We understand your guide, because it's what you grew up with. It's a training issue."
You know, uh.
And I hope they're right. I hope Al's wrong, but I know where he's coming from.
We have, we have already, we're facing, uh, some deficits this year in the budget. So, when Denise had mentioned, you know, we can kinda, you know, tighten the bell somewhere else, we're, we're gonna be tightening as it is. So, we have concerns, and we're seeing things sitting at, where we're sitting here tonight, that you guys don't see. I'm not being disrespectful that you don't care. I know that you don't see those things. But Al, if we had one, one point two million to give you the sa- safety and the satisfaction that you need, I think we would, we would do it. But we have concerns about funding everything else in this town. So, that's the only reason why. But boy, that, that's my priority, part of the motion. If you can get a platform for seven fifty or somewhere thereabouts, that'd be priority number one. And then after that, let's try to get a demo, get it in the door, let's get it in here July first, because you mentioned these guys are not safe. So, now, we don't wanna drag this thing out for six months to twelve months to thirteen months. We wanna get, the money will be available July first. It would be music to my ears to get a ring from you and say, "Hey, we, by August first, we got something."
Say, "Hey, Joe, wanna go for a ride?"
I definitely would go for a ride. And I don't know what the incentive is. Maybe you guys get an extra bowl of chili at Groveland Day. I don't know.
I have, as chief, as you know, I've probably been the, probably the most boisterous on this ladder truck issue. And I, I looked at what I looked at, I saw what I saw. I'm still, I'm still a hard believer in that we can get a six thousand mile truck, two thousand six, whatever. The selling factor tonight is, to me, and what's making me change my view with this, is Al Credit, because I hear what he says, and I can, I can, I can see the safety issue about. And I said to these guys, I've said to everyone in town, if someone sits in that meeting hall, and they can prove to me that we need to go more money, I'm all for it, and he proved it to me. I can see the point.
One point two.
No, no, we're not going one star. We're not going that high.
He's my one point two guy, come on.
You sold him, but you didn't sell it that good. But I, I, I will, I will vote to go to seven fifty based on if we can, it's a good point. It was a very good valid point. And I can, you know, and when he said platform, I'm thinking platform, the guy standing around down the bottom, but, and I, and I, I'm telling you, I did my homework as well, and I, I know you cannot find those buckets. And they were hard to find. You, there was plenty of sticks out there, and I even, people ask me, "How high's the fire station doors?" I don't know. You know what I mean? There's a lot of factors, I'm sure, into it, but that is a very valid factor. So, that's where I'm at with it.
Well, the motion's on the floor, and I've, I've added the, the two contingencies, priority with a platform, and second priority is demo. Do I have a second?
I have a second for you.
Second, thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye. It's unanimous.
Now, why?
Be honest with me.
Go, go, go. That's all I have, hey.
Good job.
Not here, I'm not here.
If you guys are done, we're going to shovel hydrants if you'd like.
I'm not here to be anyone else.
Washington Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
No problem.
We're still friends, Bill?
We're friends. Hey, listen, I don't ever hold a grudge against anyone. I'm a lover, not a fighter.
But you are stubborn.
I'm stubborn. I'll hang it to the point, and I lost, but hey, I took a beating, but not that bad.
No, you're resolute.
Actually, Bill, if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to compliment you and just say that what you did with this process by, uh,
Excuse me.
Doing your own research, for someone like me, the average person, and I have firefighter family members, I still don't understand this topic. But you, you, the back and forth helped you understand.
Very educational.
Right.
So, but hopefully you'll have it, you'll have to do this at town meeting, because this would not go well there. I don't know which way, but it's, it's just confusing.
It's a tough, it's a, it's a very touchy situation.
You've brought up a lot of good points, and I make sure they're up for discussion. That's important.
Good.
Thank you for your comment.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well done. Betty and Bill.
Really, we're only five minutes, because we were ten minutes behind the.
I was able to shut up long enough. I feel good about it.
You know something would kill me? You know? Whatever. I guess they have say at town.
So, we made a vote there too. Wow, a lot of voting tonight.
I don't think they wanted to leave here without a vote, so.
No, I, I, you know, I'm glad you brought that up. That was good.
Okay, we're a little late, bro, sorry.
It's okay.
Want to talk about the three-quarter acre lot, um, adjacent to River Pines, correct?
Correct. I have, I have a plan of the property. Good question. Thank you. So, yes, uh, so I'm Bruce Adams, Chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee, and, uh, we are looking to move forward with the potential to construct affordable housing on this thirty-nine thousand and thirty-four square foot parcel, which lies between the police and fire station and the Groves, Groveland Housing Authority, River Pines project. So, it's the grass area between the pavement and the first building. So, as I understand, that land is under the care and control of the Board of Selectmen, so, um, the Affordable Housing Committee has put forth a proposal to, through CPA, to start the design of a complex on that lot. Details of that have yet to be determined, but we wanted to at least gain approval to, to use the lot for that purpose, before we move forward with expending any more money on the project.
What do you have so far? Or do you have plans? What, what, you, I know you want to talk to us about the approval of using the land.
Right.
But what have you invested so?
Okay, so what's been, um, done so far is town meeting a year ago, uh, town meeting approved through CPA, the use of up to seventy thousand dollars for, basically a preliminary evaluation on the feasibility of building affordable housing on the site, and, um, we, excuse me, that was the first half, but the second half was, um, some more detailed site planning to see how it would fit, utility connections, lot line setbacks and things like that. So, at this point, Abacus Consultants, our, our kind of engineer planner, is, um, working on that. But we've kinda held them off from, because they've spent about a little over half of that seventy thousand so far. So, we're, the, uh, the plan would be if this, if we can use the land, they'll go forward with the initial site planning, and then we'll be in front of town meeting for about three hundred thousand dollars, I believe, for the actual design of a.
Is this, this is family housing?
Well, um, the long and the short of that was that we originally were looking to see if, um, over fifty-five would, would work on that site, given that it's next to the River Pines, with its similar population. When they did the pro forma, and they looked at whether that was feasible or not, that would require, I think it was in the range of three to four million dollars in, uh, funds from the town to be put into it. The only, uh, kind of mix of housing that, well, the mix of housing that works best financially for the town is to go with, um, some number of units that are at eighty percent of median income, some at sixty percent, and some at fifty percent, so that a different mix. Uh, so it, and that would be, could be family housing, could be anybody, be a mix of one, two, and three bedroom, in the range of two dozen or so units, plus or minus, depending on how they fit on the site. But, uh, in order to capitalize on potential for state funding, that's the mix that you really need. That's, the state is putting money into the kind of housing that doesn't exist in great numbers, and that's in that low median and moderate income.
That's what they've determined we need.
And it's not the over fifty-five. Um, that's what everybody wants to build, and there's no money for that. So, any money would have to come from the town if that's what we build.
What kind of state matching are we talking about? Uh, rough figures. And also, if you do, if you, if, if you know the number, low to medium income. And also if you do, if you, if you know the number, low to medium income, what is that, like 50,000 or something?
Yeah, if I got my numbers right, it's moderate income is about 80% of the median. The median income for Groveland is around $73,000 for a family. And.
So 80% of median, got it.
Right, so. We'd be looking at a mix of, between the 80, 50, 60 in that range. And again, the exact mix has yet to be determined. A lot of this will be determined on what funding we may get. And you really don't know what you're going to get until you actually apply. And so we're not there yet, so. You know, we're, the, the. So what we're looking at is total project cost for what our consultants, they did an evaluation of 27 units. Total cost of around $10 million to build, building. And low, low income housing tax credits could potentially pay about three quarters of that. That with funds coming in from rents, once you pay all your expenses, there's money left to kind of pay off a mortgage. And then there's a few other small programs that would provide upwards of a million dollars. And then we're looking at about three quarters of a million dollars from the, from the CPA as well as the inclusion by law funds.
Will this help us meet our housing quota?
Yes.
Will, will finish our housing quota or?
You're always going.
Yeah.
If it's low income, medium, it's still, no matter what, the 27 units will go toward our housing quota.
Quote, you're supposed to have 10% of your housing stock. And I think right now we're at about 4%, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Great enough, yeah.
I think we need like 250 units and we have about 70.
So this would give us, I think it's probably another 12, 14%. So it's a step. It would about quadruple the number that we have right now.
Now, this is a separate project. This is not tied into any other agency. This is Affordable Housing Committee.
Exactly. So it's not, I mean, we've, we've been talking to the Housing Authority.
Right.
And they manage the River Pines, but.
So this would not be an extension or a tie-in to?
No, that's a totally separate entity, totally managed separately. It's, it's a HUD, you know, Housing Interment Development, originally funded project. But that's not to say that if we as the town decided to have, you know, say one manager for all of the different housing, that could be done. But they, they do have to be managed kind of separately, even though they might be under one umbrella, they are two separate entities. And that would be added to the affordable housing, you know, the buildings, the other buildings other than the River Pines that the town owns also, which are currently managed by the Housing Authority.
Okay. Very good. And we do have free title.
Should. So this is a current survey. You just had the survey done of property.
It was just done within the past few months. So they, the firm that, the surveyor that actually surveyed it, set pins on the corners, researched it and found that it was, was a lot that had been subdivided, had been recorded. They mapped it out. It does go very close to the existing River Pines building about by.
I was going to say, lot lines, do we going to get into any lot line issues as?
No, the, I, I don't think so. It's the, the lot lines are surrounded by the town on three sides. And then on the, the development next door, and it looks like they, they did all their fencing right on the lines. So they, they, they had the.
Is that Groveland Commons?
Groveland Commons, right.
Okay. How about parking? What are we going to do about parking? They haven't got enough room for parking lot?
Yeah, that's, they, the consultant had looked that they could easily fit one parking space per.
Per unit.
Per unit on there. So if they need more, we either have less green space, more parking, fewer units.
That would all come in design anyway.
All design and, or potentially, you know, whether it's possible to use any of the, or reconfigure some of the spaces.
Once you go through planning and all that, that's all going to fall into place.
So that's set conceptually, that's where they're at right now, but all that'll come out through.
Right, in planning and all that.
The planning process and public hearings and.
Well, I definitely think that we definitely need to get some housing, more housing in Groveland for sure. So I don't think it's a bad idea by any means.
And of the affordable kind.
And I think that we, we own the land, it sounds like, and I think it could be a good thing.
Can I ask a question? At one point, there was talk about partnering with the Council on Aging.
Yeah, for a senior center. And we had our consultant look at that option. And what they found was in order to fit that on the site, it would mean reducing the number of units and that pushed the cost up even higher. So.
Unrecoverable costs.
Exactly. So while it, it's probably a site that could be used for a senior center on its own, or maybe a senior center nearby. I mean, I, I personally think a senior center in that vicinity would be nice, but the site was really just too small to fit everything on there.
If we're spending $10 million, how much is this town spending directly, let's say through CPA?
Through what we're looking at.
If, if everything hits, you know.
For everything, what's been appropriated, what we're asking for, and then what we're, we're looking at.
Low income tax credits, I mean, all the, everything happens the way, the way we can.
Actually, town, town funds would be in excess of about a million dollars.
Right.
To the homeowner? Actually to the homeowner or?
Probably through the CP.
To the, to the project.
Right, so it wouldn't be, we're not going to ask the homeowner for the money directly in their income taxes, it's going to be through CPA or whatever.
Correct. So there would be no additional.
Tax.
Appropriations, you might say.
Right.
And when you look at that, sort of call it town money, which I think is about 1.1 million dollars is what we're budgeting right now. If you look at what's come in for developer contributions and from CPA match on the state, if you actually look at what has come from taxpayers, that's only in the range of about $500,000 in total. So of a, of a $10 million project, about $500,000 would actually have been paid by taxpayers through CPA.
Right.
The rest is state match again and developers, tax credits and all sorts of other state.
So there's no HUD money, just DHCD?
Yeah, it's all, all state at this point. But that doesn't mean that, you know, there might be some opportunity to try to capture some money from another source. Either would be our goal is to try to make, you know, a zero net impact. But at this point for our pro forma, our financial planning, we're looking at.
Do these numbers include a manager of these units? How would?
Yeah, there's actually.
Maintenance management.
They've included that. And, and that's why there's, we're kind of, once you take in the rents and you pay for all the management and upkeep on the units and some vacancy calculations, there isn't a whole lot of money left to pay the mortgage. Which is why you really need some tax credits and other funding sources to make this work financially.
So if we had a, a 1% CPA, it would cost us a lot more than 500,000 because the match would be a lot less.
It would, yeah, absolutely.
About half as much.
Rather than that half million dollars or so coming from the town, it would be probably closer to a million.
Right.
So the nice thing is with CPA, you know, for every dollar that we as taxpayers have put in, we've gotten, I think, about 75 cents back from the state.
Right.
And for all those communities that don't have a CPA, we're getting their money, which is kind of nice.
For those communities that have a CPA with just 1%.
They don't get as much.
They don't get as much at all.
Yeah, we've maxed out on, on our CPA match from the state. I think we're, we're in the top 10% of the communities in the state.
Would these all be considered affordable units?
Yes, all of them. And they would all be truly affordable. We had, we tried to look at a ma, a mix where, you know, some were affordable and some weren't in order to, you know, and, and that just.
Didn't work out.
So the rents won't pay the mortgage. The rents won't cover it.
No.
Will that be a burden to the town down, down the road, obviously? Once it's up and running and they're not meeting their rents, will they be coming every year for money or no?
No, it shouldn't. The way that, again, the pro forma, the financials have worked out is that once, once it's built.
Yep.
And, you know, we put our, actually, you know, roughly half a million dollars in, you know, actual town money into it. It's self-supporting. The mortgage would be fairly small and would be easily paid by the rents. And, and the idea is the rents will go up as management costs go up, but they're looking at those should, should go in tandem.
Yep.
And it should be completely self-supporting going forward. That was one of our goals too, is to not create a burden to the town.
So right now, affordable housing ratio is about 4%, you said?
So about three and a half to.
Three and a half, and this would bring us what, a little over four?
Well, we need about 20, I think it's 240 some units total, and this would be 27 or so. So I'd, I'd probably say 10 to 12%, depending on exact, the exact number of units we can eventually.
Can I ask, is this, unlike the Pines facility, would this be limited to Groveland residents only?
No, once you take state fund, it's pretty much open to everybody. We, you know, we can try to work some Groveland component, that would be preferable, I think. But our ability to do that is fairly limited.
Right.
Good.
It's needed. We, we need, we've been chasing this number for a very long time.
12 years.
2002, the committee was calling.
And so we've been at it for.
12 years.
Perseverance.
And here we are, first project.
Does somebody want to make a motion that we allow them to go forward on this town-owned piece of property?
Go ahead, Bill. I'll let you make the motion. I made enough tonight.
You made motions, not commotion.
I made a lot of commotion too. A lot of commotion, more than motions. So I'll let you make some commotion.
You're going to make a motion or?
No, you're going to make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the request by Bruce Adams on behalf of the Affordable Housing Committee.
For the town-owned property?
To pursue this project on town-owned property.
Go ahead, a second.
Yeah, I'd second it. Sure, go ahead, second it.
And I agree. I know it's been a long time that we've been talking about this. So all in favor?
Aye.
No further discussion?
Yeah, so, Bill, at this, at this point, so what we're doing is we're giving the, go ahead. Go ahead with the, with the preliminary.
Engineering.
Numbers, engineering, what have you. Then you'll come back before us with numbers, I take it?
Yeah, it's, there's still a lot that has to be done. We're looking at at least two, if not more, town meeting approvals. So we're going to, we'll finish out the site planning, at which point this town meeting coming up, we'll be asking for some CPA money to start a design. That'll take probably at least a year.
And that's the 300,000 that you're asking for this year.
Yep.
Which, by the way, as a point of order, was approved in a proposal through the Community Preservation Committee, which I also participated in. So that was approved, but Bruce is here along with Bob Guptill, because this is town-owned property. So we need to go through this formality as well.
Right, I'm just standing.
So what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to clarify for the people watching on the cameras, so everyone doesn't get emotional.
Yep.
Right now, we're basically saying, go ahead, do your preliminary work, get your numbers together, et cetera. We're not saying we're spending $10 million. We're talked about, so everyone doesn't get all worked up.
And in fact, right now, no additional funds are being spent, other than the 70,000 that's been appropriated so far.
Right.
Again, a town meeting, we'll be asking for more money from CPA to do the design. There'll be hearings along the way. So that has to be approved at town meeting. And then if, if that looks, looks good and the people approve it, planning board and everything else, then we'll actually go forward and be looking for money for construction. We're hoping that that'll be a little over a year from now. But again, that really depends on any funding that we can get. We obviously have to line up, you know, almost $9 million worth of funding in order to make this work. And if we can't line that up, then we'll kind of probably just play a waiting game until funding does come up. But that'll remain to be seen. And potentially, you know, if we can get this designed and, you know, for less money, then it might make it, you know, easier to fund. It might not even require any CPA money. So we'll see how that works.
Has Abacus done other affordable housing units? The engineer?
Yeah, they are essentially a planning firm that, that does affordable units, as well as other. They have architects and other, we met with some of the people.
So did you second it, Betty?
I think you did.
Okay.
And then we've all in favor.
Can I just ask one more question? Did you look at any other town-owned property or was this really your sole focus?
We had, through, through our plan, we've looked at probably 20 different parcels. This one looked to be, it was our, our first target because it's right around all the core facilities here.
Central.
But, but there are others that, that if it became available and other opportunities, we'd like to pursue. This is, this was our first.
The biggest issue is density. It's, and when you look at what properties are available, unless you want to turn Shanahan Field over and rural housing, I mean, it's.
Lightning.
There aren't a lot of.
Well, that's an idea was. Just kidding, just joking.
Someone had said a few minutes ago was that we really need to start looking at a community center for, for. No place in Groveland that we have that, really, Strawberry Fields, big one. Stuff like that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Depends on what we do with Center Street too. Maybe Shanahan Field could be something to consider if we offload some of the soccer fields and recreation over to Center.
You have the location.
That's why that committee that's forming is going to help us with that decision.
Okay, I have no more discussion.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Denise, any other questions?
Now, you're going to present at town meeting?
Yeah, we'll be presented. The, the committee will.
No, I mean you specifically, Bruce.
Me, I, I'm. If I can make it, I will.
Can you do that?
We have speaking fees. See Denise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Do we want to talk about the policies at this point?
Sure, let me, let me rip through them. For your consideration, we have Board of Selectmen policies. As you know, we've been working together on a series of policies because we feel that bylaws don't exist to be able to help us operate as a board and a little bit better and certainly how we interact with the public. So for your consideration, I prepared three. These are actually, a couple of these are your idea, Betty, so I, I hopefully, I think I articulated your idea well. So let me read, let me read it to you. Membership of Boards and Commissions by Selectmen is one of them. And I wrote, "The Board encourages participation of membership as needed in boards and commissions, but with adherence to the following guidelines." And obviously, we want to have guidelines for Board of Selectmen if they're going to join other boards and commissions. So here we are. The first one is, "A Selectman may request to join a board or a commission by providing a written request to the Chair. This is followed by an agenda item, discussion, and then a formal nomination by another board member and ultimately a vote of the Board to deny or appoint." The next item is, "The appointment is aligned or should be aligned with all other appointments and reappointments." So in other words, if it's an annual appointment on, if I'm going to join a board that has annual appointments, then mine will be annual as well. A Selectman cannot chair a board or commission with voting privileges. If he or she is, is a Chair, the position must be ad hoc, meaning without voting privileges. So if, Betty, you join a board and you're going to be the Chair, then you can't vote, for example. And if this, if this changes the voting configuration of the Board, the Board membership number is to be adjusted. So if we lose a voting privilege and we have to increase that board by one member, if, if that board is, is, is willing to do that, that's fine. But the key item here is we don't want the Selectman to have excessive control. That's the idea. A Selectman can serve as an alternate member of a board or a commission as needed. A Selectman cannot join two boards that have overlapping jurisdictions and related areas of responsibilities. That was something you had cautioned us about, Betty. Makes a lot of sense to me, so I put that in words. So for example, a fin, a, a Selectman cannot join the Finance Committee and the Capital Improvement Committee.
Right.
You know, now, now you're really controlling a lot of financial stuff.
Destiny.
Or it can't be on the zoning board and the planning board. It's going to be conflicts there. So for your consideration, I think what we want to do is, this is the first time that I'm presenting this. And I think we can certainly decide to vote on these on the 23rd because you've already been, hopefully been looking at them for about a week or so. Because there's nothing to do during the snowstorm but to read, you know, stuff.
Right.
The other one that I'm going to read out, and then I have a third one which I won't read out, but the, 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 the next one, the attendance at public meetings by Board of Selectmen, we thought that maybe.
Joe.
Yep?
Do you want to talk about this one or you don't want to talk about it? The first one we just talked about?
Oh, sure. That's a good idea. Why don't we talk about that one, sure.
I mean, it might be easy to go through them.
Yeah, no, that's true. That's fine. Good idea.
So the first one we just talked about, I'm 100% in agreement with what you did, what you just lays out, that you can't have overlapping committees. that you can't have overlapping committees and, you know, and what have you. So I'm a, I'm a hundred percent on board with that. Clearly, it makes sense.
Is there anything you didn't like?
Not yet.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Well, time for recess. Okay. Betty, any thoughts on that?
No, I, I, as you read it, I was in agreement.
So, yeah, I'm in agreement.
Good.
Good.
Bill, are you voting on the zoning Board?
Nope.
You're not?
Only if I have to.
Are you an alternate?
I'm an alternate.
That's why, though.
Yeah, they asked me to be a permanent Board Member. I said no, because I'm a Selectman. I didn't want to be in that position.
But when have you been able to vote?
When there's not enough members in the meeting.
So rule of necessity?
Have you invoked the rule of necessity? Now, I noticed somebody abstained on a vote. Did you vote?
I had to vote that night.
Is that, is that what happens when somebody abstains? Do you have to vote? Because I think an abstention is an abstention.
Gee, I didn't know that. I, it's a good point.
Yeah, abstention, I would think, it's, it's not that the person isn't there. It's not that you don't have a quorum. It's that someone chooses not to vote.
And you have to have so many people to vote, I heard. It's, that brought it down to four, and you needed to just.
I don't know if that would invoke the rule of necessity, though, to, to have you vote if the person is there and just chooses not to.
The person's in the room. I, I think.
Because that is a vote.
Yeah, we need some clarity on that, because Bill will be away, and I will probably have to vote with Joe on payroll in order to pass payroll, right?
Correct.
And we'll invoke the rule of necessity at that time.
That's on our next agenda for you to discuss.
But I meant to ask Bill about that, because I saw that one member abstained, and then Bill, Bill voted. Now, I don't know.
I can look into that.
I believe they needed, they needed my vote, because it was gonna be, it was gonna be a tie.
I don't know if that was your, your place to do that.
I was asked by the Chair to, to vote, and I. What would have happened, what would have happened? It would have been, it wouldn't have been an off number. It would have been.
Well, I think, I think at that point, it's the person who abstains would need to make up their mind, reconsider. Or, I, I don't know if that would invoke the rule of necessity.
I'd like to get an answer on that. Maybe Council can give us an answer on that.
Yep.
Yeah, because we don't want to be doing that if we.
I actually didn't, I actually.
I just assumed that rule of necessity is strictly a quorum-based solution, not a.
I think that's how they.
Not a quorum that's created almost artificially, because someone decides not to vote on something.
Not to vote, right.
That's, I, I have no clue, but we'll find out.
Yeah, I can call Council.
That'd be great.
Because I don't want you to be, or that Board to have an issue because of that. Maybe you could visit it.
Well, I didn't want to become a Board Member because of it.
They don't blame you.
I'm actually thinking of.
Yeah, I, I mean, this policy also, you know, that doesn't mean you can have your own discretion and make your even more, more stringent rules on yourself, you know? Like, I, I, for example, I, I tend not to vote on my own proposals. On the, on the Community Preservation Committee, I made a proposal, and I abstained from voting for it. I figured if the Board really wants to support it, let them support it.
So you haven't, you didn't vote on it?
I didn't vote on it, right.
Until now?
Right, exactly. And then, and then, and then if, however, if there was not enough members, then I would say, okay, I'll have to vote, but.
But you must have had enough.
Yeah, we had plenty. So I figured that if they were gonna support the proposal, I would be thrilled, and I don't have to throw my hat. Now, I haven't done that consistently, but I'm, I'm tending to, to do that a little bit more consistently. Okay, the next item, and I'll read this out so the, the, the public can appreciate it. Board Members Attending Public Meetings. Board Members Should Notify In Writing or In Open Declaration At A Posted Board Meeting Their Interest To Attend A Future Meeting. The primary reason to attend is to observe and increase familiarity or knowledge of issues and processes. The Chair retains discretion to approve or deny the request. The Chair will also request that meeting is posted if two or more members of this Board of Selectmen wish to attend and provide guidelines for restricting comment and participating under open meeting guidelines. The next item is, Board Members Attending Other Meetings Should Make The Disclaimer That They Are Not There Representing The Board Of Selectmen, and Anything They Say Is Their Own Opinion and Not That Of The Board. So we have to be very cautious about that and reiterate that at every meeting. The Board Members Shall Report Findings That Are Related To Board Business At A Future Meeting, Two Or More Meeting Cycles Later, To Ensure That Such Dissemination Of Information Occurs After The Attended Board And Commission Releases Approved Minutes. So if I go to a Planning Board Meeting, I might take some notes that I think is important for a, a matter that, that, that we have to deal with. I wait till that Board, or in this case, the Planning Board releases their minutes. Sometimes it could be a few weeks before they do that, and then I can contact Denise, contact the Chair, and say, "By the way, based on what I learned at that meeting, which is related to a matter of our, a business matter of the Board Of Selectmen, I'd like to now bring forward, you know, that information." And that information basically is gonna be supported by what was written in the minutes. So it's a little complicated, but it's, it's, these are essential steps. Because what we want to do is, we want to encourage Board Members to go out and go to public meetings, but we don't want them to control the process or influence votes. A Selectman Cannot Request An Agenda Item Placed On A Board Or Commission Meeting Unless It Is A Matter That Is Deliberated and Voted On By The Board Of Selectmen, And The Request, The Board Complies With That Request. So we basically, I have to get permission from this Board to even make a suggestion to go put an agenda item on a, on another Board or Commission. A Selectman Cannot Direct Public Policy At The Meeting And Generally Is Not In Standing To Present. So what a Chair does is always try to determine if someone wants to speak at a public meeting, does that person have standing? Generally speaking, Board Of Selectmen meetings need to go to open meetings and just keep quiet and take notes and learn. That's basically what this is all about. You, you're not there to present. You're not there to deliberate and participate in discussion. In fact, I've been invited to speak at a couple of meetings, and I've refused to. I said, "I really don't have standing in this. I'm really here just to observe." Exception is generally granted only if the Chair of that Board or Commission seeks an answer or offers the Selectmen the opportunity to ask a question. So, sounds a little complicated, but basically, it's common sense. You go to meetings, you learn. We want to encourage that. We're gonna have a five-member Board, you know, in a couple of months, and, you know, we want people to go out and learn what's going on, but we also don't want them to be overbearing.
Thanks.
You know, and, and create the wrong impression.
Listening is good.
Listening is a good thing. And the last item, I won't read out loud, because we're gonna have an opportunity to do that, but we, we tightened up our resident or public comment rules. And I guess the biggest change to this is that we do want to hear from people in advance, in writing, preferably, before they come to public comment, so that we can better direct their inquiry and not waste anybody's time. So we've had a few public comments that were very helpful, very informational, but they were from, with people that brought issues to us that we couldn't address. So we want to prevent that. Plus, legally, we also want to be prepared. We, we, you know, we, we want to be prepared for the public comment to the degree that, you know, we can respond. And sometimes there're gonna be legal constraints in our ability to respond. So if we know in advance that someone is coming to talk to us about this, that, and the other thing, we kind of filter that and say, okay, well, you can do it, you can't do it, or these are additional restrictions or limitations. So, so that's all written. Thank you for your support. This is our project. It's a Board Of Selectmen project, so I encourage you to look at these again, and maybe you can.
Make a decision.
Make a decision next week, yep.
Do we meet next week?
No, we meet on the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Can we talk about that last one, Joe?
Yes, go ahead. I keep forgetting the.
The.
Which one? The public comment?
The public comment, right.
The one I just read out loud.
The public comment one, resident public comment.
Yeah, all right.
Called the Chair. Let me see if I can get this right. So, they're gonna call in and talk to the Secretary or someone to get on the agenda to talk to us, or to just tell them they're coming in to talk to us?
Right.
So they're calling the Chair, or are they gonna call?
Well, the Chair makes the decision, but the call is actually sent through Denise, the Finance Director.
So, I've heard criticism in the past.
Yeah.
That the Chair or the Secretary have pulled things out that they don't want put forward. So, this, this here is not gonna stop that. And I see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Because I've heard criticism that, that, that sometimes if it's not a, an issue that gets pushed forward, it doesn't get put forward for certain reasons.
Do you mean if the Chair or?
Or the Selectmen Secretary, or whatever.
Somebody doesn't care for this issue, and they just.
What happens is, I've heard people call into the town to try and get on a meeting or whatever, and they've not pushed, they've not got, got put on for whatever reason, and because either the Chair or the Selectmen Secretary didn't want to push it forward. So, I mean, I guess you could never stop that. I mean, there's no way you could really, I don't know who else could handle it, but I'm just saying, I've heard criticism about that. It may not even be true, but.
Could be put in writing and sent to.
Right. So that's all I'm saying is. So do we need to redo this again and add something to it?
I don't know how to, because if, if someone is, if someone has a bias, if, if, if the Finance Director has a bias, or a Chair has a bias, or a Secretary has a bias, and they don't want this person to speak, that's very hard to control and to enforce. So, I, I mean, at, at this point, what it sounds like to me is if I am a public member, and I make a request to speak, and I'm denied, then it sounds like to me we need to now have an appeal process for that. And then maybe that request can come in a second way, and, and heard by another person on this Board. That's, that's the only thing I can think of.
Right.
Right? Is it, you're gonna, you think it gets too complicated?
Well, I would hope that would never happen.
Yeah.
I've just heard criticism. I'm not saying that you.
If you've heard that.
I understand, but I mean, in the, in the hand, you know, Bill, Bill Dark once made a comment that, how did he put it? It doesn't matter if you have three members, or five members, or ten members. If you have the wrong members, it's, things aren't gonna work, no matter what. So, it's the same thing. If someone has a clear bias towards someone else, they don't want them to come here and speak about something.
But it doesn't seem like that, that would be a majority opinion.
But I thought.
But that's the criticism, and that's a good criticism. The problem is, how do we prevent it? Do we have an appeal process?
What I'm saying is.
I know, I've never denied anybody.
No, 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 I'm not saying.
No, I'm just, but I just, I just want to go on the record as saying, I know I have.
Let me get to my second, let me get to the second part of this. The second part of this is, by letting the people walk in this room free, on, that stops anything stopped out there. If they can just walk right in here and sit down in Selectmen's time and talk to us, write letter, or Chairman can't stop it, Secretary can't, they can just come in and talk.
Well, that's too risky, in my opinion.
Okay. That's my point. This is now, this now lets them walk right in, they can talk. They're only gonna, they're only gonna have fifteen minutes or whatever, three minutes, whatever it was. That's the only thing I'm trying to say. It's not like they're coming in for a whole full-blown agenda item. It's just.
Well, you know, it's probably not a good idea to just show up and walk in.
Well, that's what we're doing now, right?
So, so that is still fairly common with Board Of Selectmen, to have a public comment that people are allowed to just walk in. You could come to a common ground and have a sign-in sheet in the back of the room, that as people come in, they write down who they are and what they're here for, and the Boards.
The reason for being here.
Right, and, and the Boards still would have to read it and say yes or no, as a Board, maybe, that will, will discuss this.
Or again, they might say, "We're here because we have a problem someplace else in town," and we can redirect them. You know, we can't do anything about that, but they have a Board Of Commissioners, and you could probably meet with them. Here's a number to call.
Right. I think, you know, if you get into the forty-eight hour writing, you know, then you're really looking for an agenda item and not necessarily a public comment section. That would be the only, I would say, if you're going to take that route, then just do away with public comment and just go back to making everything agenda items. Because I don't know what the purpose of public comment, if you're getting permission in advance.
I don't, not that that many people come, but I've heard people not comfortable certain avenues, and this might be more comfortable. I don't, I don't know.
Sometimes they're uncomfortable because we're on TV.
Right.
You know, and they would like it to be more.
Right, private.
I mean, what you could certainly do is, you know, hold off on this, let it go in the format we have, and see. You know, let it go for another month or so. We have had a couple of questionable comments made that maybe it's inappropriate for things to have been said in that public comment, or, you know, this wasn't the correct group to handle it. You know, maybe you see if that continues, or if it just happens to be, you know, out of the ordinary. Before you actually put a change. So that would be, you know, a suggestion, is see if you're getting people to come in. I mean, we, we advertise it every time that we do have public comment. We have very few people coming before us, even with this open format.
Right.
Maybe you let it go a little while longer to see what type of, what type of rules are needed.
Because I do notice, I mean, it, it, it is dramatic now if we impose a forty-eight hour requirement, and. We're not really encouraging people to come in there with agenda items, and either through public comment. That's not what this is.
Correct.
There is a separate, we have a separate policy on how to get people to put things on agenda item.
And the, and the third part would be, once we do get a Selectmen Secretary, if they did call in, maybe she could say, "You need to go to this Board."
Yeah.
It, it's pretty complicated, I guess, but.
No, I, I think I like the idea also of signing up that night. You come in, it's, oh, hi, you know, you know, who are you? And so-and-so, and what are you here to talk about? I'm here to talk about this, that, and the other. Okay, that's fine. Now, the way we did on the school committee, the public comment was one hundred percent focused just on what was on the agenda item. That's another way to go. So you, you really could, you'd have to ask permission, and you had to be clear that you had standing to do it, to talk about something that wasn't on the agenda. That was very rare.
Well, that's really not a public comment. That would be just coming to speak on an agenda item and being recognized. So that really wouldn't be public comment, like a true public comment.
Yeah, well, we call it public comment, but, yeah. Okay. So, all right, back to the drawing board. We'll trash this for now, but I still enjoyed writing it.
Oh, don't trash it. It's a good idea. We're just gonna work on it tomorrow.
I've got it in my mind, and we already have something written that we're gonna be stating every, every meeting everywhere anyway, so. We already have the policy in place. We were just trying to kind of refine it a little bit. So what we have in place is working, basically what Denise is saying. We, let's test it a little bit further. Good idea.
And then see if you need to refine it. If, if it gets out of PMed, or people, you know, don't follow the criteria, then I think you develop a.
Well, thank you, Bill, for bringing that up, and Betty. That's good. The other two, I think maybe we can vote on next week.
All right. Joe, do you have those drawings from the school?
I do.
I'm gonna let Denise have those. Thanks.
Exhibit A.
I didn't see him. I'll look at him.
Actually, you can keep that.
Because we don't have to make a decision.
So the first vote you have is a one-day liquor license that you'll see a copy of in your packet. It's for an event at Beezy Park on February twenty-eighth, from six PM to eleven PM. They do have a detail officer, because they are serving alcohol.
I'd like to make a motion as stated by Denise for the one-day liquor license for Lower's Porter and Traveling Bartenders for the event at Beezy Park, dated for Saturday, February twenty-eighth, from six to eleven. Wait a second.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
unanimous, thank you.
Wow. In one of these.
Yes. The next item is, as you'll see, it's a letter from our Road Commissioner requesting permission to deficit spend in the snow and ice line. For fiscal fifteen, it was budgeted at one hundred and sixty-five thousand, as of the bills that were cut this week. So payroll and bills through February fifth, we've spent one hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. So, we are just three thousand dollars shy, and none of the bills from this weekend storm or this week have been inputted. So, he is requesting right now seventy thousand. I have a feeling we're gonna go through that probably in just these bills, and we'll probably come back at the next meeting and ask to increase that again.
And we're getting this money from thin air?
Yes. So with the Blizzard, there is an opportunity, hopefully, to recover some of those funds. There is no guarantee on that, but that's what we're hoping for. Sometimes the reimbursements don't come in until the next fiscal year, usually in July, which we can still count against our deficit. Any additional spending, though, we would have to make up. So we would have to look for either a spending freeze and then request transfer to this, or find another way to fund these items. Snow and ice is one of the only lines you can legally deficit spend.
So we're gonna appropriate seventy thousand, and it's probably gonna be spent in a few weeks.
It will probably be spent when the bills for the storm this week are submitted, if I had to guess. We spent seventy-three thousand dollars, I believe, dealing with just the Blizzard, just those two days.
Right. So I need to abstain from this comment, I do believe.
Probably.
Yeah, you should abstain, just because it does cover costs to you, yes.
Anything to do with, anything with snow and ice, I have to abstain from.
Yes, you should.
Joe, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, that's a good point. So I'll make a motion to accept the Highway Commissioner's request deficit spending for the FY fifteen snow and ice line item at seventy thousand dollars, as requested.
And I will second your motion.
Joe, second. Betty abstain, Bill.
Bill will abstain.
And so, shall we vote? Aye.
Aye, all in favor. Aye, all in favor. Joe and Betty voted to deficit spend the seventy thousand dollars. And where else are we after Bobby?
Do you have executive sessions and minutes and...
I haven't read the minutes, I'm sorry. Have you read them?
I read them here.
Do you have any issues with those?
No, I didn't see any major issues, no.
We can certainly postpone them until next meeting, if you haven't read them.
You mind, Joe?
No, no, you should read them.
Yeah, I haven't read them, I'm sorry.
You know, they're, they're well-written, so please enjoy them.
Thank you. We are listening. Okay.
Nothing controversial, there'd be no point, counterpoint.
Okay.
We're done with that.
So then in your correspondence, the first item is the minutes from your January seventeenth All Boards Meeting.
Yes.
So these minutes, you have a copy of, a copy was sent to those in attendance and those departments or boards that were invited that did not attend. I have asked all of those people to get any comments or amendments they believe should be made to me prior to February twenty-third, as that's when this is on your agenda to vote. As of now, I have not heard from anybody about any questions or comments.
Did you send them the minutes that I wrote?
I'm sorry?
Did you send them the minutes that I wrote?
Yes, I did, yep. I sent them the minutes in the packet that Bill had...
Who did?
Correct, with the cover letter asking them to review the minutes and get back to me.
Okay. And did we have a date? Does anyone remember, Joe, to have the next meeting on that?
You do, because it's in your minutes. It is in the minutes, I believe it identifies February twenty-eighth.
Okay.
It's coming up.
Okay.
Yes, February twenty-eighth.
I can tell you what it is, it's the twenty-eighth.
Yep.
Twenty-eight, I wrote it...
Saturday morning, twenty-eight.
Okay.
So if that is still a firm date, I can certainly send out a reminder, and I can post a meeting for that four...
It is, I just hope that people come prepared, because we were supposed to get things prepared for that meeting, that's...
Well, Bill's managed to do some work with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission.
Right, Secman's time, I'm going to do it.
Okay.
All right, that's fine.
The other things in your correspondence to review for next time, I mentioned at the last meeting that I would be putting forward some policies. The next two are on the advice of our insurance company. It's a Town of Groveland Employee Code of Conduct and a Visitor Code of Conduct. The Employee Code of Conduct would be given to all employees. They read these two paragraphs and sign that they were given a copy of it, and they will adhere to that code of conduct. With the Visitor's Code, it really just talks about zero tolerance policy towards workplace violence, threat of violence by the general public, or anyone who conducts business with the town. It does have some expected conduct items. This would be, if approved by the Board, should be posted around Town Hall in the library to let people know that this is how we expect them to act and conduct themselves in this building. If anything were to happen, we would be covered, because we do have a posted policy. So, it's just something that our liability insurance has recommended.
Do you want to, do you want to vote for my son, those?
No, these are just correspondence for now. And I can tell you, the Visitor's Code of Conduct is the same one that several other communities have already adopted. They just recirculate it and change the name of the towns. Your next item is a letter from the Planning Board regarding a scheduled hearing at four forty-one Main Street. They wanted to inform the Board that they have a hearing on February seventeenth to discuss four forty-one Main Street. And...
Now, I'm going to attend that meeting, so, I don't know, Betty's going to go, or Bill? Should we post it?
I mean, I'm really not going to speak.
So you do, you can attend a meeting without posting. You just cannot entertain any dialogue or discussion.
Right.
The three of us could walk into that meeting, sit and not participate, just listen.
Correct.
Okay, that's...
But if any, if any questions are posed to the Board of Selectmen, then you technically cannot answer them.
We're just here to observe.
Correct, yep, but you can certainly attend.
Okay, thank you.
Without posting, that's the key.
Correct, without posting, yep. The next letter is supporting the LEAP program at the Penticat High School. It was a letter that came through personally addressed to each one of you, so I wanted you to see what your resident and taxpayer, Paul Rosa, had to say on that.
It's nice of him. Has Elaine already left the Penticat Regional School District? Do we know if Mrs. Champion's...
Who's that?
Elaine Champion, is she still working down at middle school or high school?
I, that I don't know.
Okay, the letter of support from Paul Rosa.
Yes, and then I did add an item today that I gave you all a copy of. There will be a discussion taking place on Friday, February twenty-seventh, at six thirty PM at the Merrimack Public Library regarding prevention of substance abuse in youth. It's with Dr. Michael Judy. He is the physician for Penticat. He attends all the sporting events and acts as the physician. He will be, this specific presentation is really geared at parents. He's welcoming all parents from any Penticat district, so Groveland. This will be the first of several discussions he plans to have, and it corresponds perfectly with the thoughts of this Board looking to start a public dialogue of their own, which has been scheduled on the March ninth agenda. I did ask if he would be available to attend. He said there was grant money available in prevention of addiction. We may not qualify as a smaller community, but we should get some money out there. So he's going to come and talk to us about that, hopefully, that night. But this is a great event. If people are available, again, Friday, February twenty-seventh, six thirty PM at the Merrimack Public Library, and I will post it on our website and on cable.
So you met him, Denise?
I did meet him, yes.
So that worked kind of well with our conversation that we had?
Yes, it did. He had been to the police station and met with Officer Heather Riley, spoke with her. She's probably going to be one of the officers that comes over on March ninth to discuss what we can do as a community and steps that we're looking to take. Again, most of them come with a cost, but we are, he thought it was great that we are starting a dialogue as well, so...
Bill, will you be away on March ninth?
No, March fifteenth through the, fifteenth through the twenty-ninth.
And you're going later, Joe, to London?
I'm going away March sixteenth.
It's the twenty-third, I believe it's the twenty-third's meeting.
But I won't miss a meeting, he will, but I won't miss a meeting. The night that he's not going to be here is when we're going to appropriate one point two million for the fire truck.
For our credits.
Taxpayers have the last say. I'll be out there holding signs.
And then I just gave you a draft of what I have currently for February twenty-third on the next agenda. So I did include that draft in your packet.
I did, I did get a, I do what's called intake messages. I send them to Denise to share with the Chair. If I get some information from the public or from some area that I think is important for the Board. So I got a message the other day regarding the fact that a couple of calls went out. I think it was last week. Dispatch sent out some calls to the Groveland Fire Department, and there wasn't a response. So I, I don't know, I believe that there was a discussion about that with the Fire Chief and the Police Chief, is that, do you know, Denise?
So I met with the Police Chief to discuss that. I had told him, before it comes to the Board of Selectmen, it really should be discussed amongst the two Chiefs and figure out what their course of action is when it comes to dispatch. They had a meeting tentatively scheduled for yesterday, but I found out this afternoon it has not occurred yet. So, the two Chiefs were both welcoming an opportunity to discuss. I do know in my conversation with the Fire Chief that there are several instances, being a call department, that they are toned out and no one is available to reply, and then the next course of action would be to call mutual aid. So, in the instances you're referring to, Georgetown was called, and then on the next one, Georgetown and West Newbury were called. So we do have agreements.
Georgetown happened to be in Groveland still.
Correct.
It hasn't, so it doesn't sound like it's escalated to the point that it's a Board of Selectmen issue at the moment, because it's being worked out between the Chiefs.
Correct. From my understanding, it's several years ago, I believe, the Board of Selectmen put a directive on to, I'm not sure if it was the Police Chief, that too many, we were wasting money on calls that were not needed. So they came up with a policy that the Fire Department would not be called, and I don't want to quote it incorrectly, but I believe the basis was the Fire Department would not be called initially on medical calls. The police as first responders would get to the scene, EMS would also attend, and if a Fire Department was needed, then they would place the call. This goes against the Fire Chief's protocol and what he believes, so that's why I feel it's up to the Police and Fire Chief to discuss.
To work that out.
And then if they can't come to an agreement, and if that policy was in place from, you know, your predecessors, then I think it's something the Board should weigh in on it. But they should discuss.
And just so Billy, Bill and Betty know, that was unsolicited. That information came to me, and so I immediately, what I do, I don't like to harbor any information that I think is important to the Board, so I type out what I call an intake message. It's information that I intake. And I, and I send it to Denise, and of course, I expect that she's sharing that with the Chair, so that you're aware of it. And of course, there's no discussion, because I don't want to deliberate any matter, unless it becomes an agenda item at some point, so...
But we can't talk about it.
So the second item was, there's some discrepancy brought to my attention regarding payroll with the Fire Department. I don't know if that's been a discussion item with the Chief. Have you talked to him a little bit about that, or any idea? Not to put you on the spot, I just don't know.
Did that reach your desk?
It has, so I did have some discussions with the Chief, but given the storm, we haven't really gone in-depth. I do know there was an issue with payroll when they imported the December hours that some of the incident reports had been incorrectly entered into the system. The discrepancy was discovered, and employees were told, so the discrepancy wasn't discovered until January. People came forward and said, "I'm missing some hours." They ran, they re-entered, and then reran a comparison to see what the discrepancy was. Some of those people have been made whole on the January payroll, if they had them in time, and the remainder would be made whole on the February payroll. The question was posed if they were going to get corrected W twos, and they will not. It's not a matter of, we did not pay them incorrectly, it's just a matter of reporting the hours. It's the same as if they worked the last week in December and we pay them in January. So, we are not planning to adjust their two thousand and fourteen pay. We are not planning to adjust their W twos for last year. But that's pretty much all I know. I don't know who or how many people it affects.
I don't know, I don't either, because only one person presented that information that, you know, was one family member, so...
I'm totally confused what we're talking about, because this is the first I've heard about it, and I have no idea. And I thought it was protocol from, maybe we're talking about the wrong thing, but the Chief was not supposed to talk to any of us, and we weren't supposed to talk to anyone over there. But I don't know.
So this matter was not the Chief. So this matter was, and I will say, my only criticism to this was, we did not hear from the firefighter, we heard from a family member of the firefighter.
We're talking about Fire Department, not the Police Department.
Correct, we're talking, on this matter, we're talking about the Fire Department and Fire wages. And I had said, you know, each firefighter received a printout on the system of exactly what they were getting paid for, and they were to sign off on it. If there were any discrepancies, they were to note them. I haven't gone as far as to pull those. I know we did not pay people until we had their signs. So I don't know if someone made a note that they had a discrepancy, if they even knew they had a discrepancy. I don't know those specifics yet.
Between the Chiefs.
And the good thing is that they're paid monthly.
Correct, we now pay them monthly.
It's not like they're paid twice a year, so you can catch it early and correct it, yeah.
So it can be cleaned up quickly.
Well, at the end of the day, we're, you know, we're certifying, I mean, Betty and I and Bill, we're signing documents, and, you know, we're not auditing what we're signing. So, I mean, if things are not proper, you know, we want to at least be sensitive to that and offer assistance if and whenever needed.
Yeah, so the proper protocol with any department, though, would be, you know, normally, an employee fills out a time sheet or authorizes their time, and then a department head authorizes that and sends it over. You know, we don't know, we don't have the incident reports to know who attended what.
Right.
In this case, for instance, in the Fire Department, they do submit those incidents now. So we do, but I don't know if there are incidents that aren't on there. That's really what you have a department heads for, is the Chief.
Right, they'll do their job.
Correct, and so they did discover, he did discover it. I spoke to him today about it. He told me what the situation was, so he believes some people were made whole in January, the remainder will be made whole in February. And I was told, he did notify the entire department, everyone was aware of that. Again, I don't know if that's, I just know what he's told me.
All right, that's good, I appreciate it. So thank you again, I, if I get information, and I think it's a habit, it's a good habit for Bill, and when we have a five-member Board, I'll suggest that when you get information from the public that impacts the Board, communicate it through the Finance Director. Don't engage in a conversation, but at least have it out there that you've collected this information, took it in and disseminated it, so we can figure out what to do with it before it becomes, especially before something becomes a crisis.
Although I would caution you, because I do feel that both of those matters really are not Board of Selectmen matters at this time. I think there is a proper course of action. Like I said to the Police Chief, you need to speak with the Fire Chief. As the two public safety chiefs, you need to discuss it and try and, and I think the same thing. I think the firefighter should have gone to the Fire Chief. If there was a dissatisfaction, then come to me or come to the Board. So I do think we need to just tighten up the way things are being reported, because I think people take the easy way out, you know, and, you know, pick up the phone and call one of you three, when, you know, it should be dealt with at the department level first.
Well, that's the problem is, over the years, you know, people have been in the habit, "Hey, let me call my favorite Board of Selectmen," because I have a grievance or... But, you know, and so now that Board of Selectmen, you know, doesn't share that with anybody, that becomes a problem, but you're right. I've always struggled with unsolicited inquiries. And I get nervous with them, I don't know what to do with them. So I like to type them and send them to you, dump them on you, and make the Chair aware that, you know, someone is complaining to me about something, and... But you're right, I've got, you know, we all, we all have to struggle for that. But we're all prone to that, being on this Board. No question, this is, the Board of Selectmen is the Chief Complaint Department of the town, I know that.
So what Joe just talked about, maybe I'm wrong, but whenever I get some kind of those inquiries, I usually call the Chair. Am I doing that wrong? I should be giving it to you? I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to do the wrong protocol.
Well, I would let Denise know, because I would think that's...
So let you know.
Yes, I mean, because again, it's, you do need, you do need to extend a courtesy to departments, so that if someone's complaining and hasn't gone to their...
But when the complaint of something comes to me...
Correct, but if someone goes to you and has averted their department head, or has averted the proper process, then yes, you should tell me, and I can say to them, you need to go back to your Chief, your department head, whatever, and try and...
So we're going to you for that, but so if we get a phone call from the media, go to you. In the School Department, we go to you. Understand what I'm saying? I got a phone call from the media wanting to talk about some issues, and I said to go to the Chair. Maybe I shouldn't be doing that, I'm just trying to make, just go to you. And then I had a phone call from the School Department about roof cleaning, and I said, "Chair, maybe," I don't know, am I doing the right thing, that's all I'm asking.
Open meeting law is very...
Anyone in trouble.
Right, well, right, and that's, and that's part of what, right, we were trying to avoid. So, for instance, the, you know, Betty attending the meeting last evening, instead of her calling each of you and thus engaging in a discussion.
Can't do it.
She came to me and said, "Notify my other two Board members." So that's part of why, you know, you taking a phone call and then calling Betty, and then you two getting into a discussion about it. then you two getting into a discussion about it.
That's not right.
Is technically not appropriate. So, you should either say to the person who called you...
Call you?
You need to call this person, or, you know, with the media, the response would have been, you should, you need to call the superintendent. You know, if you're calling about Penticott, you need to call...
The reason they were calling me was the father superintendent's phone number.
Well, that you shouldn't be giving out, but that's, right. But that's why, you know, so if you can handle it by saying, you know, "Call this person," but you really shouldn't be engaging with your board members.
No, no, okay, I got you.
Yeah, that's a problem. You want to be respectful, but it's very difficult. And I will tell you that I don't, you know, it's very rare for me to have a conversation with Betty or Bill. Betty is, you know, I think you've called me because of an item of necessity, that had to be, an emergency-type thing, but, you know, open meeting law is a double-edged sword. It's also very difficult, you know, you can't talk to one another, and it's almost irritating. Last night, I created a bit of a crisis, and my perception was not proper because of, you know, I was not aware of what was going on, and I've got angry people on the other side, and it's because I can't pick up the phone and call my colleagues and say, "Hey, what's going on?" We have to wait to get a message from Denise.
Well, and I will tell you just on that, Joe...
But that's the law of the land, I understand.
But Betty does a great job of keeping me informed, so if you have a question, you can certainly call me. If I have any information, I will share it at that point. She did call me and say she was attending that meeting. I didn't really know much else at that point, but I could have at least said to you, she's attending a meeting. And then, you know, as I told you last night, she was on the phone telling me what was happening. I got up my computer, and then your email came in. So, you know, and I would encourage any of you, if you have a question, if there's something you're not sure about, if there's a meeting or something you're unsure about the chair, you know, you can call me. If I know the information, I will tell you. That way, it protects you from calling each other.
It is, it's all a matter of protecting each other and continuing to work well together, so...
And I did this afternoon get a call from the press, because she knew I was at that meeting. It was Jen Solis.
Was it 25?
Excuse me?
Was it Fox 25?
No, no, it was Jen Solis, a local reporter.
Oh, Jen, oh, yeah, from Newbury, yeah.
And she said she heard I had been there, and I said, "Yes, I was." Said, you know, it was informational, and we looked at each other, we knew, we couldn't leave the kids in that condition, and the school in that condition. But it wasn't a vote, and, you know, Jeff Mulqueen would talk with her, and I think she tried to reach him, or she did reach him.
A few weeks ago, when we were having the discussion back and forth with the police chief, he told me that he has in-place protocol, which I now have his cell phone numbers and the other, and the deputy's cell phone number, which I lost, but anyway. But he told, he told me that there's a media group that they hired over there that handles all the media.
Correct.
Is that the John Guilfoyle?
It may be, it's the same.
At the end of the message that we got about weather and everything?
Oh, no, that came from, that was someone from Penticott.
Oh, is that who that is? I didn't know who John Guilfoyle was.
The media group, actually, the fire department hired them as well, and then I found out the police were hiring them, more so to do two different things. In the fire department, it's to issue press releases if need be, to maintain a website and public relations. The police, I believe it's similar. If an incident happened, instead of having a information officer, they would have a PR person actually handle their public relations.
And out of that whole thing, I mean, I know we didn't have as many storms then, but it seems like out of that whole thing that transpired, it seems like the information now comes from there to you a lot clearer.
Correct, well, and I had had a conversation with the chief and deputy.
And not that I'm saying, I mean, I think before, in all defense to the selectmen, we were trying to get the information because we weren't hearing it, but now that all transpired, it seems like it's clearly flowing now where it needs to go.
Yes, so I had had a conversation with the chief and deputy and said, and I had the same conversation with the fire chief. You know, if there's things you need the board to know, and obviously, any type of emergency notice, send it to me. I can send the same notice to all three of you at the same time. If there's something urgent, I will pick up the phone and call you or text you so that gets across. But that's the way, again, it's protecting you, you all find out the same information at the same time. You know, the police chief isn't picking up the phone and calling one of you, the fire chief isn't picking, so that you're all involved and you're all aware of the same information.
Is the same protocol in place that we can't talk to the fire department as well as we can't talk to the police department? That's the same kind of protocol, strictly?
It really should be the protocol for every department. You know, you have, with every department, you know, you really shouldn't be calling employees if you're not going through the department head.
No, 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 I don't mean employees, I mean talking on a matter, you know, like a...
Right, but you shouldn't be picking up the phone and speaking to a firefighter when you should be calling the chief.
I understand that.
So, it's the same type of thing.
I'm saying, if I had an emergency matter that I needed a call over to the fire station...
Yep, then you should be calling the chief.
Yeah, you're not prohibited.
If you have an emergency, call Betty, she'll call Trinity real quick.
If you have an emergency, you call 911, but if you have something that you need, if there's a fire question or if there's a fire issue, it really, you should go to the chief before, you know, or if for some reason he's unavailable, then it's the deputy. But that really, and that would go to anyone, you know, you shouldn't speak to a water employee when there's a water superintendent, you know, that's really, you should be going to the department.
I was told to call 911. I'll call 911.
I do have one quick matter for you. At last, at our last meeting, you mentioned you would like to have, you would like to invite the building inspector to a meeting on February 23rd. So, I did compose a letter, I did send it to all of you to review, I'm not sure if you have, but if this is something you still are in agreement and you still want to conduct this meeting, then if you could please sign.
On?
Above.
Above.
Above your name.
John Hancock, above my name.
Then I will invite him to attend.
Yes, thank you.
Executive session or open session, if he chooses.
By his choice.
Correct.
Great, thank you for doing that. And that's for February 23rd?
Yes, it is.
Do you know, do you know if you're going to, are you going to be able to attend February 26th, the regional finance, as far as you can tell?
Yes, yep.
Thank you, Denise, for that. We're going into executive session, is that correct?
Right.
I think we kind of merged Selectmen's time and Finance Director's, so I don't know if we're done with Selectmen's time.
Selectmen's time was devoted to the discussion we got on the school.
So, Tom from the Zonin Board of Appeals, Tom Wakefield...
Yep.
Was proactive. We had a meeting, which hopefully it's going to be on TV, so it was a very productive meeting.
What, were you talking about ZVA meeting?
A ZVA meeting.
When?
We had a ZVA meeting.
Last week?
Last week.
Okay.
So, in the meeting, we discussed that, we had the all-boards meeting, and we discussed how we're going to try and make changes and blah, blah, blah. So, Tom Wakefield went to the Merrimack Valley Planning Department, and he obtained this booklet. He has gone through it and said that he thinks it would be great for the town. My, tonight would be that I would like to get one of these books to each department right now, before we meet again for that all-boards meeting, and let them go through this book and have their input when we show up. They may say this book is perfectly fine.
And how do we do that? How do we do that, like tomorrow, like next 24 hours, how, you going to call?
We need to get books. We need to call back over Merrimack Valley.
Will you be able to call, I'm saying?
In the next 24 hours, probably not.
Okay.
But I don't know how many we need.
Every department head should have one, don't you think?
Well, I think, planning, conservation.
If you want to give me that book, I can certainly call.
Okay. So, they said to Tom that these come in boxes, and they, if we adopt this, everywhere we need to put them in the Town Hall, we can put them. So, we want to give tender planning, tender assessor, tender clerk, whatever. That's if, they may want to make changes, it may not meet up. He went through his end of it, and his end of it looked good.
And what is the document?
This document is for billing, for billing permitting.
What's the title?
Planning and...
Is it going to be customized to Groveland?
It may not be.
Best practices model for street, local permitting.
Oh, okay, best practices model for street land local permitting.
So, I think you'd have to either tie in local bylaws or just refer, maybe that it refers to bylaws.
It may not even be bylaw-driven, you know what I mean? But I know he said he looked it over and it looked good to him, but his...
Why reinvent the wheel, huh?
That's right.
So, I'll leave it with you, Denise, and you can...
Yes, get some more.
So, if we can get them out to the people, the board, so they, by that meeting, they can have them and look them over, and, because I know I watched the conservation meeting on TV, and it looked to me like they were working on their end of it to submit, to come back. I know they were talking about it.
Really?
So, they were being proactive, and that's, I know, we talked about it, we had a really good meeting, and, you know me, I said, "That's the most hated board right here that we're sitting on," and...
No, we're the chief complaint department.
You made a lot of friends.
Well, no, I mean, you know, they were, they were all, everyone on the board, we all got along good, and everyone understood, and we talked...
It was a great meeting.
I don't know if it was, the voice came out yet, but hopefully it will sooner or later. But that's all I have.
I have one item. I just want to publicly thank Chris LaCory, who's behind the camera here tonight. Chris is the subject of a lot of conversations when it comes to some of the technical difficulties that we've had. He's worked very, very hard for our town and is always, always, within 24 hours or less, on top of some of the issues that we've had. We've had some failures with, you know, the last one, for example, was unfortunate, was the wrong wiring of equipment by one of our vendors, and we've had issues with Comcast, and just a big learning curve with all this new equipment. So, Chris has been at the vanguard, protecting the town's interests, and is always there behind the scenes, working very hard to make things work as well. So, thank you, Chris, for your service. We haven't seen you in a while, but I know I'm on the phone with you a lot when people watch meetings and they don't hear voices, or they don't see things, and you're always there to try to figure it out for us, so thank you, appreciate it.
And we were actually in a bind tonight and had no one to film, and I cornered Chris when he came in, so...
Do you have, do you have regular sessions with your people to go over the equipment and what have you?